Welcome to the June 12, 2023, Tuolton City Council Meeting. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. We'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance tonight with Councilor Brooks reading the pledge. For seating. Thank you. That brings us to announcements, and we have two announcements tonight. The first being proclamation declaring the week of June 19 through June 25, 2023, as National Pollinator Week in the city of Tuolton. I believe M is here somewhere to give presentation. And Beth.
You got a school.
Make sure you hit the button on the... He did it for you.
I'm on.
Hello, councilors.
Like the specs. Nope, you gotta turn around so people could see him.
Yeah.
The only pollinators you can get tonight. Chair of Teapark and joined tonight by the current vice chair, former chair, Beth Dittman. And we are here just to update the council on the city's involvement in Pollinator Week and being a bee city, which I think you all know we are. We are a bee city USA, which very much like being a tree city USA, has certain commitments that come with it. The Teapark Committee serves as bee city USA committee. And we do all kinds of things to create and enhance pollinator habitat in the city. It looks like our slides aren't going. Is that something we can rectify?
Okay. Oh, yeah. Oh, did that not happen? Guess not.
Okay, we're gonna wing it. We're going to be flexible. And one of the most visible parts of being a bee city are the bee city USA signs and online presence that you see around our city. We have a lot of pollinator events and activities and have planted in the last year over 29,000 native trees and shrubs, which promote pollinators in our city and have engaged hundreds of volunteers in those activities. I'm gonna turn it over to Beth to talk about the community benefits and some pollinator facts.
To put it in short, the benefits of pollinators are if you like to eat, then you like pollinators. Our pollinators do not just include beautiful bees and adorable butterflies, but also the lesser exciting but equally as important pollinators such as flies and bats. And the benefits to our community is that when we invite pollinators into our community with local and native plants, we also then invite those pollinators. And that ensures a healthy ecosystem. So not only if you like food and you dislike bugs, for example, then you do like pollinators. Pollinators help us maintain a healthy lifestyle from plants all the way to human and back around. They're credited to our native species. And again, as I said, a third of all of our foods and beverages come as a result of pollinators helping with that.
There are a lot of ways to get involved, unfortunately. Oh, my God. So Pollinator Week is here. You can see our planning event. When I said hundreds of volunteers, 725. Then you'll see the pollinator benefits and the pollinator facts.
Next slide, please.
Next slide, please. Next slide, please. I didn't mean this much comedy, really. Next slide, please. And if you're interested in getting involved, there are a number of ways that you can do that. The Backyard Habitat Certification Program, I would say, as a participant, is an amazing resource to find out what in your yard is native and how you can bring more pollinators to your yard. Friends of Trees is an amazing vital partner with the city of Tuolton for our Putting Down Roots volunteer events. The Byram School Pollinator Garden is an amazing place to visit. Later in this month, there will be a Pollinators Bioblit opportunity where citizens in Tuolton can tell you where they have plants and seed pollinators. And as you mentioned, as we mentioned when we started, Tuolton is very proud to be a bee city USA. People are buzzing about it. And if you'd like to learn more, you can check out their website. And we'd like to open it to any questions that the council might have about Pollinator Week.
Any questions?
Thank you for mentioning bats. At the Oregon Zoo, they talk about how bats are important to their pollinators, and they are responsible for tequilas. So if you like that, take care of our animals and pollinators, too.
All right, with that, Councilor Brooks will read the proclamation.
Thank you both for the presentation and enthusiasm and such almost service to the city. I really appreciate that. Proclamation declaring the week, June 19 through June 25, 2023, as National Pollinator Week in the city of Tuolton. Whereas pollinators, such as thousands of species of bees, are essential partners in producing much of our food supply. And whereas pollinators provide significant environmental benefits that are necessary for maintaining healthy diverse ecosystems in towns and cities. And whereas pollination plays a vital role for the trees and plants of our community, enhancing our quality of life and creating recreational and economic development opportunities. And whereas the city of Tuolton manages parks, public landscaping, and other public lands that include greenways, natural areas, and wildlife habitats. And whereas the city of Tuolton provides recommendations to developers and residents regarding landscaping to promote wise conservation stewardship, including the protection of pollinators and maintenance of their habitats. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the City Council of the city of Tuolton, Oregon, that the city of Tuolton designates the week of June 19 through 25, 2023, as National Pollinator Week in the city of Tuolton. All are urged to recognize the subservience and support efforts to protect and plant pollinators. The city of Tuolton supports bee city USA certified affiliate status in the recognition of the value of pollinators by proclaiming June 19 through 25, 2023, as National Pollinator Week in Tuolton, introduced and adopted this 12th day of June, 2023. City of Tuolton.
And thank you, Councilor Brooks, for your consistent and enthusiastic advocacy for this.
Thank you both.
Mayor, can I make a reminder that everybody who has a mic in front of them, eat the mic? Our friends in the overflow room are having a hard time hearing. They could hear you.
All right. That brings us to announcement item number two, a proclamation declaring June 19, 2023, as Juneteenth Day in the city of Tuolton, and this is led by Councilor Sacco.
Thank you. Proclamation declaring June 19, 2023, as Juneteenth Day in the city of Tuolton. Whereas the city council's 2030 vision is for Tuolton to be an inclusive community that promotes equity, diversity, and access in creating a meaningful quality of life for everyone. And whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1, 1863, declaring enslaved people as free, paving the way for the passage of the 13th Amendment, which formally abolished slavery in the United States. And whereas Texas was the last of the Confederate states to receive orders requiring the end of slavery, with Union troops announcing that all slaves were free in Galveston, Texas on June 19, 1865. And whereas June 19 has a special meaning to African Americans and has been celebrated by the Black American community for more than 150 years. And whereas Juneteenth celebrates the end of slavery and recognizes the high price Black Americans have paid for civil rights and equal access. And whereas June 19 is an occasion to remember and reflect on the significant ways that African Americans have enriched society through their contributions. And whereas Tuolton is a community that includes values and welcomes diversity in our community. And we believe that the rich diversity of communities in Tuolton is one of our greatest strengths. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the City Council of the city of Tuolton, Oregon, that June 19, 2023 is recognized as Juneteenth in the city of Tuolton. The community is encouraged to respect and honor our diverse community, celebrate, and build a culture of inclusivity and acceptance. Introduced and adopted this 12th day of June, 2023.
Thank you, Councilor Sacco. That brings us to public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone to address the city council regarding an item that is not on tonight's agenda. I know a lot of you are here for an item that is on tonight's agenda, but keep your comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone here who would like to address the council, it could be either in the room or Zoom. This would be the appropriate time. I have three people signed up, but you don't have to be signed up for follow the comment. I'll start off with Mr. Steve Irvine.
Think I got a hot mic?
Welcome.
Well, thanks for having me. This is my first city council meeting, and it's an experience. So thank you all for your commitment to Tuolton and what you're all trying to do here. I'm talking tonight about the camping discussion that we had earlier. And just to have a couple of comments. The first thing I would ask the council is, what's the objective? If it's to comply with the House bill, great. What's the minimum required to comply? I heard it seems like we're mixing metaphors a bit. I heard that we really want to advocate and help the homeless. And then on the other hand, we want to comply with the House bill. What are we trying to do here? Would the city have done anything differently if the House bill wasn't passed? So would we even be having this discussion if the House bill wasn't passed? That we've been talking about sites. Didn't really hear, Megan, I'm sure did a lot of good work here, but didn't really hear how the sites were selected. I didn't hear a lot of discussion. I did hear that we're talking about a site near the Commons. And we talked about the potential of having 100 campsites at that site. It's a 12 by 12 site. And what was presented, I'm not sure where we landed on the spacing between it, but at a 12 by 12 site with 100 sites, or with a 12 by 12 campsite with 100 sites, that could be 300 to 400 people that you have on that site. And I don't know if the city gave consideration to that. A 10 by 10 tent will sleep about six people. So give some thought to that. That's a lot of people there. Lake Oswego isn't changing. There are city ordinances. I'm surprised that there wasn't more benchmarking with Lake Oswego if we're trying to do the minimum required to meet the House bill. So that's my question to the council. Why wasn't Lake Oswego considered? I don't see a lot of tent camping in Lake Oswego. So what are they doing? Homelessness is a complicated problem, and I don't mean to sound heartless. I worked in Portland, and I've engaged a lot of homeless people there. I've worked at a church. And that's another thing that wasn't mentioned, the beds at the churches in our community. What weren't mentioned is resources for the homeless people that we have today. And those churches provide a valuable service that don't seem to have been considered by the council when we talk about resources available. So I understand that homelessness is super complicated. There are people that life just happens to them, and they need help. That's why I would advocate to have the smallest possible footprint with the smallest number of sites, so that the city can actually help those people that need help. Just to have a site to have a bunch of people, not in favor of that, because what I've seen is people where life just happens. The drug addicts and alcoholics that need help. Mentally ill people that absolutely need help. But then there are just the transients that are passing through that are just looking for the best resources that they can have. And I don't think Tuolton should be a home for those. Thank you so much. Really appreciate you guys.
All right. Next up is Peggy Irvine.
Thank you. I'm not sure if I have much more to add, because he usually talks everything I meant to say, too. But I had more questions, I think, after the meeting than I did before. So, and it said you would take questions into consideration, so I just had a few. The police chief mentioned that it wasn't a very big problem. So I wanted to know how many actual people are homeless that each night on average that you would have to house. So, and yes, like Steve said, it was no mention of... You just said the city of Tuolton doesn't provide anything, but I know there are resources at churches and other places. But also, it was said that, I think, that these sites were near services. And so they were able to access services, which is great. But they're not city service... They're like the one that's smaller one that's near the Commons. They would use the Commons bathrooms where a lot of families are and people are. Or someone, you mentioned coffee shops. But those are, you know, those are businesses. So I'm just thinking, do you have the capacity to offer, provide services for all those people? And there was no mention of, in these tents, are you allowing drugs, alcohol, firearms, pets, things like that? Because then you can't really monitor defecation with people either, but especially with pets. And there's just gonna be a lot of issues. So I feel like you're asking for a lot of problems in Tuolton when maybe some don't exist. Maybe there are just, you sounded, Ms. Brooks, that you are on top of services, which is great. And, you know, you have the resources or you know where to go. And I know that people, Tuolton provides things like that, or there are resources. So that's good. That's what I would suggest to as a compassionate thing, to try to get those people help, which I'm sure it sounds like you guys are, which is great. So I just feel like there's not that big of a problem. You would just need to consider, like, opening up a big area that would create a problem. So that's my...
Thank you.
Thank you. Tim McQueen.
Don't necessarily have any questions, just some prepared comments, if that's okay. Appreciate the time to speak. Thank you so much. As a Tuolton homeowner, taxpayer, father, coach, two children in TTSD school district, I'm here to express my dissent from allowing homeless to camp in any of Tuolton's parks or neighborhood green spaces. Understand that there are sites in question, but we haven't really got a rubber stamp on whether or not parks are not part of it. The severity, heartache of this tragic homeless epidemic on the West Coast certainly not lost on me. Oftentimes, we ask ourselves and others, where is your heart? To that, I say my heart is located very close, but still directly beneath where my mind is located. And my mind tells me, simply put, introducing homeless into our parks will result in the entire city becoming less safe. And this is just to be a fact, not just based on overwhelming data, but my own personal experiences. Our family fled Sacramento County four years ago, based solely on the park that the cities and parks I was raised in just transformed into areas that were just unsafe for my family to enjoy. Homeless camps, spending nights in parking lots, moving into neighboring trails and forests. That's really what was to blame. The bike path parks and hiking trails out there are just terrifying places. It's just wild uncertainty, really, and the stats are horrifying. But since living here, my children, family, we generally enjoy experiencing all of Tuolton's parks, nature trails, but I have no doubt that if the homeless are allowed to camp there in the parks, you will not only see a huge decline in recent or city-related activities, community sports, day camps, family gatherings, but increase in crime. My kids play year-round sports in this area, love to attend sports-related day camps. However, should our parks be turned into homeless encampments, we just won't participate in those activities anymore. We just feel that there's coaches, referees, camp counselors, oftentimes high school students. Their safety will be in immediate jeopardy. If camping should be allowed in parks and green spaces, one of the primary concerns is, what I think we were talking about tonight, where exactly are these people going during non-camp hours? The probable answer is being surrounding neighborhoods. So with that, again, the police will enforce that, move locations, you know, offer the prohibited hours that are in effect. But, you know, with all due respect, our city police force already have enough extraordinary daily circumstances to manage. We could see those resources be used, put to better use rather than layering in what could be a major task at their feet and the likes of which they never really experienced in the city at such a potential scale. Furthermore, to be quite honest, like, we will personally consider moving from the area if we start to see these awesome city parks just become anything like, let's be honest, what Portland has become, which is not great. So homeless encampments, you know, they obviously aren't providing any value beyond what they can do for families who need it. But I think to the point of who needs it, that's the issue, right? It's been documented that there's gonna be rising costs to the city, increased crime, litter, open-air drug markets, that the potential can increase dramatically. I just asked yourselves, what's the city gonna look like in five to 10 years if this happens? Because I can tell you if those camps were allowed five years ago, when we moved in, we probably wouldn't have moved here.
Thank you. All right. But I encourage folks to come back in two weeks when we have the hearing on the draft ordinance. But just quick FYI, folks who were here for work sessions, that public rights away in parks are specifically excluded in part, and camping is not allowed in our parks, nor will be allowed in our public right-of-way. But if you want to keep up the date on the proposed ordinance, go back to the city's website in about a week or so. You'll see the new draft ordinance that we'll be reviewing. There'll be public comments on the ordinance, and we'll be voting on it in two weeks. Are there any other folks waiting public comment at all, Nicole? With that, brings us to consent agenda. These items considered routine. It will be adopted by one motion unless someone in council would like it not to remove or heard separately later tonight. And that the consent agenda consists of four items. Consideration of approval of the work session in regular meeting minutes of May 22, 2023. Item number two, consideration of resolution number 5699-23, authorizing the city manager to execute a maintenance and operations agreement with Randy McLeod and Janine McLeod for Bassal Creek Parkland. Number three, item consideration of resolution number 5700-23, adopting Tuolton's Equitable Housing Funding Plan. And finally, item number four, consideration of resolution number 5701-23, authorizing the purchase of right-of-way and easements for the construction of the Boons Ferry Corridor Phase Two project, part of the Tuolton Moving Forward Program. Would a counselor like to have an item removed, consent, and heard later separately tonight?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda as read. Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda read. Has read any discussions and emotions? I'll vote over, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Abstain. It's unanimous. That brings us to public hearings. Stranger shop, and this is Mr. Hudson, welcome. Consideration of resolution number 5702-23, declaring the city's election to receive state revenue sharing funds for fiscal year 2023, 2024. Welcome, Don.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Don Hudson. I'm the Assistant City Manager and Finance Director here with the city. And in front of you this evening is resolution number 5702-23, declaring the city's election to receive state shared revenue funds during the next fiscal year. There are three things the city must do in order to receive this portion of the liquor taxes that are apportioned to us. We must have levied property taxes in the previous year. You must pass the resolution that's in front of you, approving participation in the program. And you must hold two public hearings. The public hearings are governed under ORS 221.770, and these are for a portion of the liquor taxes. One is before the Budget Committee on the Possible Uses of Funds, which was held on May 30. The second is tonight before the City Council on the Proposed Use of Funds. We are estimating to receive $456,315 in fiscal year 23, 24. These funds are not restricted, and they're programmed into the general fund budget for other uses and general uses of the city. Digaret taxes, marijuana taxes, gas taxes, and a remaining share of the liquor taxes are not part of this public hearing. They're governed under another part of the ORS and are apportioned differently. There's, after that, if you pass the resolution, then we turn it into state to be able to receive our shares in the next year. At that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Don? Councilor Brooks. Go for it.
I move to adopt resolution number 5702-23, declaring the city's election to receive state revenue sharing funds during fiscal year 2023, 2024.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number 5702-23, declaring the city's election to receive state revenue sharing funds during fiscal year 2023, 2024. Any discussion on those motions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Abstain. It's unanimous. Thank you, Don. All right. That brings us to the big item for tonight, our public hearing. Consideration of the Norwood Road Plan Text Amendment and Plan Map Amendment, PTA 23-0001 and PMA 23-0001. I have some mandatory verbiage to read per state law, so I'll go ahead and do that first. The state legislature requires the following information to be read per ORS 197.7635 and 6 and ORS 197.7963B. One, the applicable criteria for this decision are as follows per TDC 1.032. A, granting an amendment is in the public interest. B, the public interest is best protected by granting the amendment at this time. C, the proposed amendment is in conformity with the applicable objectives of the Tuolton Community Plan. D, the factors listed in TDC 1.032-sub4 were consciously considered. Item E, the Tiger Tuolton School District Facility Plan was considered. Item F, the amendments are consistent with statewide planning goals. Item G, the amendments are consistent with the Metropolitan Service District's Urban Growth Management Functional Plan. And finally, item H, granting the amendment is consistent with level of service F for the PM peak hour and E for the one-half hour before and after the PM peak hour for the Town Center 2040 Design Type, TDC MAP 9-4, and E/ E for the rest of the 2040 Design Types in the city's planning area. Item number two, testimony and evidence must be directed toward the above criteria or those criteria in the Development Code, which you believe apply to this decision. Item number three, if additional documents or evidence is prohibited, sorry, is provided in support of the application, any party shall be entitled to a continuance of this hearing. Item number four, unless there is a continuance before the conclusion of initial evidentiary hearing, a participant may request before the hearing is closed that the record remain open for at least seven days after the hearing. Item five, failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the council and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. The failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow this council to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Item six, the hearing will begin with a presentation from city staff, followed by testimony on behalf of the applicant and supporters of the applicant. Next follows the evidence against the application. Rebuttal will then be permitted. After evidence is received, the hearing will be closed, and the council will deliberate towards a decision. Any tentative decision will be reduced to a final written decision and adopted by the council, usually at its next meeting. And finally, item number seven, if any council members wish to announce any potential conflict of interest, bias, or ex parte contact, contract, or contact, they should do now. Do so now. Councilor Hillier.
Yes, I'd like to disclose my ex parte contacts. I live in the Ibox CIO area. I drive past the multitude of signs in our community that are encouraging the no on Norwood. I have received and read all the emails, both pro and against this application. I got the postcard on my door. I turned it into the city, and it's in the records. I do want to say that the emails are important, and I receive them from people I consider friends, people I haven't met in our community yet, people who I share grandchildren with. And I thank everybody for their input. I also live and I work in Tuolton.
Councilor Brooks.
I too want to express ex parte communications. I drive by the site often. I live in the area. I drive by the site often. I live in the area. I've had numerous emails. I think all, most of them have been to all of city council, but there may be something that was personally addressed to me. I've had voicemail messages on my phone. And several communications that way.
Most person Pratt.
I'll do my ex parte disclosure that I, I have read all the emails, which I believe are in the public record. I've seen the signs as I've driven by. I got the postcard on my garage door and I also have had a couple of people call me about this, which I've just told them that I cannot discuss this issue.
Gonzalez. For me, my ex parte is I attended the public meeting on October twenty fifth last year before I was elected to the council. I drive by there every single day. I've received a postcard. I've had emails sent to me directly. I've had on Facebook instant messages directly and I've had phone calls raised myself. And of course I drive by that every single day there and back.
Council Reyes.
Yeah, I want to disclose my expertise. I have email communications as well, like most of our, my fellow council members. I have forward them to the city. I've received just a couple of phone calls that I actually have. They, they really I've, I've declared that I can discuss the matter. Thank you.
Council Sacco.
I would like to disclose my ex parte communication, which includes, I have read the emails written and received by the community. I have driven by the Norwood site and have seen the, the signs posted along that area and within my neighborhood.
And basically my ex parte communications are same as Council Sacco, driven by the site. Seen the signs, gotten emails, but no phone calls. So. Phew. All right. Think that covers all of us. All right. So I got some housekeeping tonight. It's how things are going to run. Kind of mentioned a little bit before. So how this happened and what's going to, how this is going to roll out is staff will do their report. Then the applicant will present. Then those folks who are in support of the applicant. Then we'll have those folks who oppose the application. We'll have some folks possibly maybe who are neutral, who want to state their feelings. And then the applicant has final rebuttal tonight. At that point, we have the ability to close public testimony at that time. How I want to do the folks who want to state their support, opposition or neutrality. Is that we'll do the folks that are in Zoom. I understand there's a lot of people in Zoom. Those folks who are in Zoom, please raise your hand, use the raised hand feature. And let folks know if you're in favor, opposed or neutral, so we can sort you out correctly. We'll do a last call on Zoom. Once we think we're through everybody on Zoom. We'll then move to folks who are here in person. There are five seats, four seats up here, plus the seats that are here. Well, I'll call up names in groups of five. Then go ahead and decide, you know, take a seat where we want to lead the charge first, can be sitting in front of us. At the fourth person, I'll read the next five people and they'll come up, fill these seats so we can keep this going tonight. And I ask that you keep your comments limited to three minutes. And that do not state what has already been said before. If you are in support of what has been said before. Just say your support, what Joe Blow said. You don't have to say it all over again. Save that time for yourself to say something new or different. But you can certainly say that I agree with Mr. Joe Blow and Ms. Joe Blow. And here's my additional comments. I also would like to keep a a good decorum. This is quasi judicial, so it is kind of like a court. So please no booing, hissing, clappings, you know, snapping of fingers and stuff like that. Let's keep it like you would behave in a courtroom. Do we have everything? I think that's it. So with that, I'll ask the city to start presenting the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Steve Cooper, Assistant Community Development Director. I'm joined here tonight by city attorney Chris Kreen. I'd also like to acknowledge that the rather large volume of your packet was put together in assistance with Madeline Nelson, Assistant Planner. Before you tonight, the project description is an application, two applications by AKS Engineering and Forestry on behalf of Vista Residential Partners and Property Owner Horizon Community Church. A plan text amendment and plan map amendment applicable to a nine point two acre site at two, three, three, seven, zero Southwest Boons Ferry Road. As mentioned, there are two applications proposed, the first of which is a plan text amendment, which would remove the locational factors from the high density, high rise zoning district purpose statement found in the Twalton Development Code at section forty four dash one hundred. Which currently limits the zone roughly to the downtown area of Twalton. The second part of the plan text amendment would to revise TDC table forty four, three. To limit the structure height to the lesser of four stories or fifty feet in the RH HR zoning district. Which would be applicable to the subject site. And then the second part of the request is an application for a plan map amendment, which would change the existing zoning on the nine point two acre site. To high density, high rise zoning. This slide shows specifically the proposed text of the text amendment. As you can see in the red strike through. It removes the locational restrictions specific to the RH HR purpose zone. And then under table forty four dash three adds a height restriction, height maximum that would be applicable to the subject site. This slide shows the existing and proposed zoning. Existing zoning is on the left. Again, one acre of RML zoning and eight point two acres of institutional zoning. If the zone change were approved by council, it would be a combined nine point two acres of RH HR zoning as shown on the right hand side of the slide. Along with the application, the applicant has submitted two voluntary conditions of approval. The first of which is the installation of a traffic signal at the Southwest Norwood Road and Southwest Boons Ferry Road intersection. This would kick in prior to occupancy of future site development. The second voluntary condition of approval is a sixty foot buffer along the Southwest Norwood Road frontage of the site. To preserve trees that do not need to be removed for future site access or public roadway improvements such as sidewalks and street widening. Additionally, the applicant has offered three additional conditions of approval. One is a commitment to restrict ten percent of the units of the future apartment complex to be affordable to workforce middle income housing. For the next fifteen years. The second is to construct forty electric vehicle charging stations. And the third of which is to build the subject development to the US Green Building Council lead standard. Additional conditions recommended by staff should the council vote to approve the applications. The first of which is to construct a westbound turn lane, left turn lane on Southwest Norwood Road headed towards Boons Ferry. And the second would be the city would contribute, excuse me, the city would collect a proportional share from the applicant for a future construction of an identified transportation system improvement in the metro regional transportation plan. To construct a second right turn lane at the I five Boons Ferry Road southbound interchange. The applicable criteria are found at TDC thirty three dash zero, seven, zero. They're also covered quite extensively along with a set of findings analyzing the evidence and the record. Within your findings and analysis in your packet. The mayor's read through these and so I'll just kind of go through them pretty quickly, but just again for your benefit. Granting the amendment is in the public interest. The amendment is timely. And the proposed amendment is in conformity with the applicable goals and policies of the Twalton Comprehensive Plan. The criteria D asks the council to consider consciously the following factors. These include various characteristics of the area of the city, trends in land improvement and development. Sorry, thank you. There you go. Sorry about that. Section D requires the council or asks the council, excuse me, to consciously consider the following factors. Various characteristics of the city, trends in land improvement and development and natural resources, to name a few of these multiple criteria. And then finally, E asks that because the amendment involves residential zoning, that the school districts substantiate that there's adequate school district capacity. For the additional students that would be generated by the development. F requires the council find that granting the amendment is consistent with applicable state of Oregon planning rules. Applicable Oregon administrative rules, including compliance with the transportation planning rule. And then lastly, that granting the amendment is consistent with the Metro Service District's Urban Growth Management Functional Plan. With that, I have Bill Beers, Planning Commission Chair is in the audience and coming up to provide the Twalton Planning Commission's recommendation on the applications. Bill?
Evening, Mayor and councilors. My name is Bill Beers and the Chair of the Twalton Planning Commission. On April twentieth, twenty twenty three, we met and voted four to one to recommend and now both the plan map amendment and the plan text amendment to the city council. So my fellow commissioners and I read every submitted comment. There were less at that time than there are now. We reviewed and listened to the applicant's presentation and we took a break. That was kind of a long thing. And then we listened to all the testimony, just like you did, our planning to do Zoom first and then in person. So after listening to everyone, we discussed the amendment. We occasionally asked questions to the applicant and staff. And at the end, we concluded that the proposed text and map amendments are not in the best interest of the public. And they're not in conformity with the goals of the Twalton Comprehensive Plan. The proposed location is not one to support housing at the greatest density of household living with the greatest access to amenities. And it's consistent with Twalton's high density residential high rise zone for our comprehensive. Any folks have any questions? I'm happy to answer them.
Question for Bill.
And I'll stick around for a while too, if you think of something later.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Beers. And then this final slide just summarizes potential council action. And so we can come back to this slide later in the evening as appropriate. And that unless the council has questions for staff or our city attorney, that concludes my presentation.
Any questions for Steve at this point? All right. With that, welcome, Mimi.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Mimi Dukas. I'm with AKS Engineering. And joining me here at the table is Dana Crosscheck from Stoll Reeves. We are both here on behalf of Vista Residential Partners. They are the applicants this evening. We are joined by our full project team. That includes Melissa Slowdemaker, the lead planner on the project. Austin Cole is on Zoom. We do have Johnson Economics represented by Brendan Buckley. He is on Zoom. Lancaster Mobley, Todd Mobley is here in the audience. Todd Prager is the arborist and he is on Zoom. And then Spencer Anderson is on Zoom. I'm going to start by turning it over to Dana.
Good evening, Mayor Bubink and city councilors. I'm going to start. Is it not on? Oh, okay. Sorry. Okay. Good evening. I'm going to start by taking a step back and it does feel a little redundant because the mayor script had this information, the staff report had this information, but I think it's worth repeating. The approval criteria are paramount here. Every issue you hear this evening, you need to translate into how does this correlate to an approval criterion? And not only that, but what does the criterion actually say? Your role here as a judge, you have to consider the facts and the evidence and apply the standards, the standards that this city council has adopted. And then you have to weigh evidence. And when you're weighing evidence, you have to consider things like the source of the evidence and the expertise of the one providing evidence. And so examples, traffic, you're going to hear a lot about traffic. Standards are very technical. A traffic engineer versus anecdotal. I mean, we all sit in traffic, so we feel like we know a lot about traffic, but you have to consider the expertise that's involved, your own city traffic person versus anecdotes when you're considering evidence.
What am I supposed to point this out? Or it's that's okay.
Um, so these are some of the approval criteria that we think are most relevant and that are relevant to the issues that are going to be presented to you this evening. I'm not going to read all of them, but things like public interest, you're going to hear about that. Policies and goals in the comprehensive plan, that that's something else you'll hear about. The TPR, the Transportation Planning Rule, and then the statewide planning goal ten about housing. So public interest. What does public interest mean? There have to be guidelines. There have to be standards that are applicable. And in this case, it's what the city council has adopted in its comprehensive plan and its adopted policies. It's not your opinion. It's not the hundred people that are here's opinion arbitrarily about what they think is in the public interest. As a body, the city has decided and enumerated in the comprehensive plan what is in the public interest. So traffic, again. That space, that issue of traffic, your comp plan tells you what is considered in the public interest, as does the TPR. So if issues related to traffic meet your criteria in the comp plan and in the TPR, then it meets the public interest. The other criterion about conformity with goals and policies in the comp plan. Words matter. Your comprehensive plan deliberately uses different words when it's describing different things. The reason this matters is you're going to hear about amenities and are there enough amenities nearby? As I'll show, not quite yet, that section of the comprehensive plan talking about amenities is not in a section entitled goals or policies. That means it's not an approval criterion. That means denying this application based on that as the planning commission recommended is not a legal basis. It was wrong of planning commission to deny or recommend denial based on this. So here is a snip of one of your comprehensive plan sections. It's number three about housing and you'll see the words that are used. Goals and policies. That's what the approval criterion talks about. Next slide. This is chapter ten about land use designations where the, the section about amenities is referenced. Does anyone see the words goals or policies? No. It's objectives. It's different. It's deliberately intentionally different and it's not applicable. TPR. This is the transportation approval criterion. It is very specific and it is very technical. In the staff report, you'll see the criteria alone go on for pages. What is analyzed? The only thing about traffic that is analyzed that is material is what is a reasonable worst case scenario under the current zone? And what is a reasonable worst case scenario under the proposed zone? It's not what's today's situation with a vacant parcel versus what kind of development is going to be built? You have to assume development under existing zoning versus proposed zoning. And then when you look at that comparison, you determine whether there's an impact, a significant impact. If the answer is yes, that that impact can be mitigated, then the TPR is met. It's a technical analysis and here the city's in-house traffic engineer and your consulting traffic engineer agreed that TPR has been met. And just to provide you some context, so these are all, you know, pretty high level concepts. The amount of traffic we're talking about here, I think it's really important to start the evening off talking about this. In the morning, the proposed zone change reduces the amount of traffic. If you don't believe it, you can ask the city engineer or your traffic consultants. And the reasons for that is under today's zoning. An elementary school can be built there. And that creates a lot more traffic in the morning than housing does. In fact, it creates one hundred and fifty seven more trips. So for example, if this application is not proposed and an elementary school is built there, traffic in the morning will be worse. So what the cities can traffic and these, these lines are from exhibit F in your packet. The city's consulting engineer says that traffic in the morning will decrease. says that traffic in the morning will decrease, and the intersections will perform better. In the evening, there's an increase, sixty trips. And the intersections will perform the same or slightly worse. The next important conclusion is that even if there is no zone change, the intersection of Boons Ferry and Norwood will fail under existing conditions. But with the zone change, you get a signal there that fixes these impacts. So I think what's important, see, we all think we're traffic experts. The folks that are engineers have concluded this. And I think it's important that the data, the facts, when you're weighing whether you want to provide housing that's attainable for middle income and workforce housing, you're going to be, that's what you're weighing here. Housing or perceptions of traffic. We're talking about sixty trips in the evening PM is what the evidence, the only evidence by traffic experts show. This is the conclusion of the consultant that the city hired. There's a benefit to the public because of the decrease in existing delays and increases in safety. It'll be safer. There'll be a protected crossing for pedestrians to access nearby transit stops in a future park. That's what the traffic experts are saying. The next example of standards, the approval criteria, and that words matter. This is the housing goals, both in state law and in your comprehensive plan. And these are minimums, not maximums. So what your housing needs analysis shows, you see in the staff report, it's described as the floor, not the ceiling. Why this matters? You're probably going to hear a lot this evening about how many dwelling units the city has already approved and that we don't need to approve any more housing because we're near what the housing needs analysis has said is the target for twenty years from now. That doesn't matter. You're allowed to provide more, particularly if you believe, as the evidence shows, that the HNA, while it was based on the best available data at the time, we know that it's too conservative. And Mimi is going to go into this. For example, the HNA, based on data in two thousand sixteen, was adopted in two thousand nineteen, and what it projected to be the need, the population twenty years from now. When the census came out, you'd already surpassed in the year twenty nineteen, or was it twenty twenty? What that twenty-year projection was. So your housing needs analysis is the best we had at the time, but it's wrong. It's way too conservative. If all you do is meet the amount of housing that that HNA projected, you're already behind the eight ball in terms of providing housing. So said differently. Feeling like you cannot exceed the HNA is not a legally supported basis to deny this application. And that was one of the reasons that the Planning Commission recommended denial, and it's just not accurate. It's not legally supportable to deny based on that. So that's your background on what the approval criteria are. Mimi is going to go into all of the details of the project, but I wanted to set the table in terms of really the lens that you should be looking at these issues and the evidence through.
Thanks, Dana. So I want to begin by doing a review of the proposal that's in front of you. So we were aware that there would be concerns with this project. We started out from the beginning trying to think through those concerns and what we could do to address them. This site plan is not formally in front of you. The project needs to go through architectural review if the application before you this evening is approved, and that's when the site plan will be reviewed. We wanted to daylight it to make sure that the public understands what's really going to be proposed, what it's going to look like, feel like. So some of the important components that were planned for is retention of the buffer trees that are located along Norwood Road, sixty feet. The access point has been shifted to match the existing access to the church so that no additional trees or a minimal number of trees would be impacted with that new access point. So retention of the trees. We've set a maximum of four-story height for this site or fifty feet. That's actually matching the current institutional zone has a maximum height of fifty feet, so we're staying within that. And it matches what was approved at the Plumbak Gardens project just to the south. And then it's got open space and amenity areas. Through the course of the public review of the application, we did see the need to modify the application a bit. We have proposed to convert ten percent of the units to be affordable workforce, middle-income housing. So that's eighty percent of median income, very specifically, making sure that it is viewed from an equity lens. We're including forty electric vehicle charging spaces and committing to USGBC lead certification for the project. Dana talked quite a bit about why the application is in the public interest. Fundamentally, there are two components to this, well, three, really. The clear need for additional housing. There is no question that we need additional housing. It is in every news cycle, national news, local news. There is a housing crisis within the country, the state, and the region. It's undeniable. That's not enough for us to say, but it's a truthful thing. We've supported that with the reports and data. I'll dive into that in a bit. But you, as a council, need to balance out the need for that additional need for housing and the potential impacts for it. The primary impact that is up for discussion is transportation. But we have a very clear criteria for how transportation is reviewed within the state of Oregon, and it's the Transportation Planning Rule. As Dana says, it meets Transportation Planning Rule. It meets the criteria. So there's also questions about, okay, if we need housing and it meets the criteria, why here? This was a downtown zone. Why are we moving it out of downtown? So there's a couple of components to that. Downtown multifamily development is kind of a different animal. Typically, it includes structured parking. It's a more urban design. It's expensive. It's smaller units, and the rents are higher. That is a type of multifamily housing, and it's an important piece of the equation. It has not worked in downtown Twallerton. You don't have sites that are building out like that. That same type of housing is permitted within your current commercial zones. It takes very, very specific economics to make those projects work. You also have challenges in downtown Twallerton. You have a lot of environmental constraints. You have a lot of land that's in the floodplain. It's holding development back like this. So why here? Because you need it in both locations. You need it scattered around your community, dispersed through your community. Try to get that diverse housing stock throughout the community instead of clustering it into one spot. So the housing need, I said the demand is well documented. But the specific need within Twallerton is, it begins with your housing needs analysis. But the Twallerton market, multifamily is needed because it is that bridge housing. It allows you to get into a housing situation before you are ready to invest in homeownership. The goal within the housing needs analysis is to have forty-five percent of new housing units be multifamily, and that is to achieve that diversity. You only have three multifamily projects with over fifty units that have been approved in the last twenty years. So that goes back to my comment about you need to open every opportunity you can to multifamily because it's a very difficult type of land development. And it's very, very needed. It is documented within your goals and policies that multifamily is a priority. It's a it adds housing opportunities for people beyond just homeownership. Oops, whoa. That's a sensitive clicker. Dana talked about how the housing needs analysis is not a, it's a minimum, not a maximum. There are flaws within your housing needs analysis. First of all, the baseline data for your population was very low. It didn't follow the, it didn't match the census data from two thousand twenty. So you can see the table at the bottom of the screen. It began with a baseline of twenty-six thousand seven hundred forty-five. That baseline should have been twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty-two. That's a substantial difference. So you start with a bad baseline, and then your projections are all tilted because of that. Furthermore, as Dana talked about, the data for the housing needs analysis dates back to two thousand sixteen. That was seven years ago. That was before the COVID housing boom. It was before the millennials jumped into housing formation. So it's conservative, to put it politely. There is much higher demand for housing than what is shown in your housing needs analysis. That is part of why it is a floor and not a ceiling. So from the technical standpoint of your housing needs analysis, it does identify a shortage of our HHR of four acres. So that is your floor. And this is your buildable lands inventory from two thousand nineteen, I believe. And that showed eighteen acres of multifamily land available, and of that sixteen acres has developed out. So this is a key opportunity to add housing supply, buildable residential land to your housing supply. There is one existing site that carries the R HHR zone in downtown. It happens to be located in downtown. But as I mentioned before, property in downtown carries a lot of environmental constraints. So this is the site, the existing site overlaid with the environmental constraints of floodplain, wetlands, Title III buffers, natural resource protections. There's just not much buildable land left on that site. So this site is a great opportunity. And why is it suitable? First and foremost, you have a willing property owner seller, and you have a willing buyer. It is an opportunity that we all need to jump on while we have it available. The site is well-suited from a topography standpoint. It's got good utilities. It's got access to a major collector and major arterial. It has bus service along Boons Ferry Road, proximity to the future park. You've got the jobs located in the Basalt Creek Corridor. So you increase the opportunity for people to live and work within the same city. And it has access to goods and services and amenities. The site itself will have onsite amenities, the EV charging stations I talked about earlier, open space, pool, dog park, and then a clubhouse with fitness center and barbecue. I talked about it before, so why not downtown? You can allow it in both. This does not take away from the need for downtown multifamily. You can still use this zone in downtown when the opportunity arises. When you have a willing seller and a willing buyer, you jump on it, but right now, before you tonight, you have a site that has willing seller, willing buyer. And you have a lot of need and demand. Let's see here. And then the other criteria is transportation. That really goes back to the Transportation Planning Rule. As Dana said, Transportation Planning Rule is looking at the most intense development that is allowed today versus what is being proposed with the new zone, what is the most intense development allowed there and comparing the two. If there's an effect, if there is a traffic increase, can it be mitigated? It is mitigated in this situation with the signal, and there are frontage improvements that will come with the project as well. It gives the pedestrian crossing across Boons Ferry that is not available today. This will also include the proportional contribution that staff talked about at the Ellingson I-5 interchange as well. So with that, I'm going to turn it back to Dana.
So as we've indicated, the approval criteria have all been met. We've listed them there. What I like about this slide is that it shows you, it summarizes some of the critical comprehensive plan policies that are relevant here. And you've done the hard work already, and you've decided what you should do when presented the opportunity to increase density, to provide more multifamily units, and to encourage development of workforce housing. Now that opportunity has been presented to you. This is an opportunity for you to implement all of the policies, all of the goals that you've already adopted in your comprehensive plan. If you fail to implement your comprehensive plan, you're not going to have housing. How many work sessions and presentations have you been through when you learn about providing equity through housing and funding for additional housing? Well, this is an opportunity to take action on all of those policies that you've adopted. So at a high-level conclusion, you know, some of the public benefits are the green building methods, the improvement to the transportation network, and housing that is affordable to workforce housing. We've already heard by the reaction from the folks in the audience, it's housing versus traffic is what this is coming down to. On the housing side, it's a needed housing type to, that's attainable by a segment of the population that you've identified as needed housing. On the traffic side, it's reduction of traffic in the morning, slight increase in the evening, but it's all been mitigated. We request that you approve this text and map amendment and advocate for housing through your actions. Thank you.
So we do have our full project team here. I suspect you've got some questions, and we're happy to answer them. So with that, we'll turn it over to you.
Questions? All right, Council President Pratt, start.
First, and I think this question might be for Steve, but when I looked up the term multifamily, that included more than apartments and included the other, the housing type diversity, like the condos, triplexes. So what is the definition of multifamily?
Well, I think that the way they have in our code currently is that it would be anything with more than four units because four units under the HB two thousand and one became basically plexes that are allowed in different locations, and so it would be, but it could be a different, like what you're referring to as far as ownership structures, like the condominium or other things.
So if there's like ten units.
Correct. Yeah, so a smaller, I mean, it could be a small level multifamily complex, like a ten-unit is a good example.
Okay, great. Then my next question is, I'm wondering, I mean, I think it's great you were going to give ten percent of the units to eighty percent of the MFI, but I'm wondering why you limited to fifteen years? That concerns me because we have long-term people living there. That's going to put them in a great burden in fifteen years.
And start introducing yourself.
I'm Lee Novak with Vista Residential.
Yeah, sorry.
Typically, most deed restrictions tend to spin off after that fifteen-year period if you look at low-income housing tax credits. If you look at low-income housing tax credits, it is a similar period of deed restriction, the fifteen-year requirement. And also, as projects age, their rents typically decline, and the majority of the project will then be more affordable to folks who are in that eighty percent range. So that's usually the policy rationale for why a deed restriction will burn off after a period of time is that overall the project ages and it will. I'm sorry. Just that overall, over time, the projects, this one is better, age and their rents become more affordable. So that's why over, after fifteen years, it makes sense to burn off the deed restriction.
And my next question is about the 60-foot buffer. Oh, I'm going to speak louder too. On that 60-foot buffer, is any of that included in an area that would be an easement or area where, I think that's a county road in Norwood, where the county could come in and add a lane or a multi-use path or something that would encroach on that 60-foot buffer?
So the, the 60 feet is measured from the proposed right-of-way. So the county would need to obtain more right-of-way to expand it. We do still need to work with the county on what their improvements will be and the logistics of building that roadway. So for example, there are public utilities that the, the public utility easement typically goes adjacent to the right-of-way and that's where your franchise utilities go. So PGE, Comcast, all of that, those need to be undergrounded. And so there could be some impacts to the tree buffer for construction of the PUE improvements. We have worked with some of those franchise utilities in the past and been able to do them on the opposite side of the street and just do connections across. And we'll work to do that, but that's a little bit out of our control. Does that?
It's sort of, I'm going to express my concern and I know you've got your arborist here, but and even where the trees end, you need some space to allow for their growth. And what I don't want to see is a repeat of what happened at Autumn Sunrise. You cannot leave one line of fir trees. They don't, that's not how they live or survive.
Right, right. Todd, do you have anything you want to add to the conversation? Todd Prager?
Sure, this is Todd Prager and the project arborist with Todd Prager.
Todd, you're hard to hear.
Are you able to hear me? Okay. Now?
You're going to have to shout.
All right. So the goal of our preservation plan is to maintain the, the outer edge of trees along that buffer because any disturbance to that edge would really compromise the growth of trees. And we don't want to expose the interior trees to any disturbance. So the goal is really to push any improvements as far north as possible towards the roadway, such as having a curb-type sidewalk, having utilities under the curb-type, curb-type sidewalk if possible. And if there does need to be encroachment with utilities, then boring the utilities underground. So I don't know if you're able to catch all that, but that's, that's the plan.
So that's the plan, but is there, I guess, any assurance we have here? That that will happen in the end?
That assurance happens more with the architectural review. Like I said, we, we knew that this was a sensitive topic. It's why Todd is on the project team. And so we've designed a site plan to allow for it, but we have to work with the county on the logistics of their improvements. The, the improvements between the curb line and the right-of-way are really more at the discretion of the city. The county tends to control curb to curb. So we will continue to work with city staff for options like going curb tight with the sidewalk. There's a widened sidewalk in that location because it's a pedestrian bicycle pathway through there. But we, we can follow the, the guidance of Mr. Prager, try to get the utilities either under the sidewalk or on the north side of the road, bore across. There's tools available, but those details get worked out more at the architectural review level. We're aware of the sensitivity, staff is aware of the sensitivity. So that would, that would get higher scrutiny through the architectural review on the implementation of it.
And then you've used, I'm going to use your example from the traffic study, but it'd be an elementary school. And in that aspect there, you would likely have a large field or something. So I'm wondering if you built the apartments instead, how much of that, other than this tree buffer, how much of the space would be left as green space?
With a theoretical school site?
No, as a, I'm saying if you had a theoretical school site, there would like, most likely be a field and some green space. So with apartments, how much green space is expected?
The green space is more of what you saw in the site plan. So we would have the tree buffer and then it's a, it's a more manicured open space. So there's the, the common green with the barbecue space and the, the clubhouse, the dog walk. So it's improved. It's, it's not outdoor play. It's more adult recreational space.
Okay, I'm going to go the traffic study and I forgot. Oh, on the traffic study, and maybe that's all that's required, but you just, you just studied peak hours. And I understand that in elementary school, you're going to have traffic at those times. But did you look at the traffic that, like if you have residents, you're going to have traffic during the day. You're going to have traffic on the weekends. Was that looked at at all?
Yes. So we knew traffic was going to be an important issue in the, in the application. So we are required for this application to review the transportation planning rule. That is a 20-year long-range analysis. Because we knew this was an important topic, we actually did the full transportation impact analysis, which looks at the build-out situation. So it takes our actual proposal and puts it across the roadways as they stand today, not the theoretical 20-year projection of those roadways and their capacity. So you've got both, you've got build-out and you've got the TPR analysis. And the TIA does include AM peak, PM peak. And Todd, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we studied the school peak hour as well. Todd Mobley, you want to come up? What?
Good evening, I'm Todd Mobley with. Good evening, I'm Todd Mobley with Lancaster Mobley. We conducted the traffic impact study for this application. Yeah, our analysis, it's based primarily on the AM peak and the PM peak because we know from years of transportation planning in the area that these are the, these are the critical peaks when the congestion is the highest. So that's why in these types of studies, those are the periods that are focused on. In the long-term transportation planning, it's primarily the PM peak hour.
But you also looked at the school peak, right?
We looked at, for the operational analysis, we just looked at the morning peak hour and the evening peak hour. But the afternoon peak hour, we could compare trip generation. But we didn't come through the operational analysis during that peak because it's, it wouldn't be one of the peak periods where our trip generation is the highest, which is why we didn't.
My last question is about, I'm sure you're well aware, that's Sherwood School District. And I see that you've got something from Sherwood Soul District saying they could accommodate that. My question is if you reached out to Talton Tigard School District on the expected petitions to go to a school that's less than a half a mile away as opposed to being bussed to Sherwood?
We did not, that's, that's a couple of steps of, of theoretical. And I'm not sure that the district would know how to react to that. So we didn't, we did not ask that question. We did reach out to the Sherwood School District. On transportation, I'm sure Dana's coming up here. We do want to remind the council that, that we did that additional analysis so that, that you would have that information for your knowledge, but it's not actually the criteria. So just bear that with a grain of salt.
But it will be the criteria during the, the site plan review. So if this is approved this evening and it goes to architectural plan review, there's another review of traffic and that's the actual build-out. What are you proposing?
All right, those are my questions for now. Thank you.
The questions. That's the Hillier.
Thank you. Could you clarify, please, in the transportation review that? Yeah, what did you, what exactly did you study? The 9.2 acres? I, I'm not clear as to what, I, I don't believe that we're looking at apples and apples. And so I'm pretty transparent about that.
So we did in the, we did in the comparative analysis between the existing zone and the proposed zone, the development potential of each considered the entire site.
So just the 9.2 acres that we're referring to, but it, did it encompass any of the autumn sunrise part?
Trips from autumn sunrise are included in the, in the traffic study by way of, of growth rates. We added those trips in, but we didn't, the 9.2 acres is what we did, the comparative analysis for what you could build in the existing zone, because that is our site and what you could have built in the proposed zone. So autumn sunrise is accounted for, but it's a separate site, if that makes sense.
Okay, I'm, I'm not sure I quite get it, but I also wonder if, why we didn't look at anything except for the peak? Because in my mind, the industrial, or excuse me, the institutional zone that we're comparing it to is basically equal, in my mind, to the autumn sunrise development as a school. And those trips are going to go back and forth to Sherwood. I'm sure many people in this room and Zoom have children and you drive back and forth and back and forth, at least till they're juniors in high school, right? And so I'm trying to understand, like, why, I, I just don't see that in here and I need your help to find it. And it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me.
I think you're, we're conflating a couple of different things here. One is the trip characteristics from autumn sunrise. We did include those trips which occur.
At the negative 157?
No, that, that's a, that's a separate comparison. So the negative one.
I don't get it, so help me.
The negative 157 is looking only at our 9.2 acres.
But how can we look at only 9.2 acres?
Let me, let me start with our site then. So our 9.2 acres, if you developed a school on that site, that's where the, a school would generate a lot of trips in the morning, more so than a residential use. So that's why.
Especially from Sherwood.
Correct. And so the site itself has a decrease in development potential during the morning peak hour. A school versus multifamily residential. School generates more trips in the morning. That's just our site, right? Does that, does that make sense so far?
Yeah. I, I, I have a hard time believing that, but yes, it makes sense. And I'm not an expert, but I do drive the roads, so. And I drove my kids to school for a long time, so I would be a person adding to that transportation problem.
Right, and that's one of the reasons, I, I'm with you. I have children that I've driven to school lots of times as well. And that's, that's one of the reasons that schools are really trip-intensive in the morning peak hour. That's the busiest peak for a school. And so that's why when we compare development as a school to development as residential, they're different.
So we're assuming that these people in the residential 9.2 acres are not going to leave their home and drive their children to Sherwood?
Some may, just like autumn sunrise trips. They're residential, they're, to the extent those people have kids that go to public school. That's what we would consider those trip destinations, schools, employment, all of that is, is accounted for.
And so in that assumption, in your study, as part of your science, do you then assume that a majority of the people will live and work in Toallerton? And that's how you also get to that negative 157? Or is it literally just the school because of how it's zoned right now?
So the, the trip rates within this study are all determined based on the ITE manual. So Todd doesn't make them up. He doesn't, you know, dream up, okay, I think it's going to be about this. Those are all within the ITE manual. And it says, if you're doing multifamily in this type of style, this is what your AM trips are going to be. And this is what your PM trips are going to be. Because within any multifamily site, you've got people who are taking their kids to school and you've got people who are going to work. And the ratios call, all kind of average out. So the, the numbers are pretty formulaic, quite frankly. But then you put them over the regional system and you say, okay, here's, here's how they distribute. When the IT says this is the total volume, and then Todd looks at the system and says, here's how they disperse out based on destinations that everybody expects. And that's reviewed by, by the county engineer, it's reviewed by the city engineer, it was reviewed by ODOT. So that's how the numbers are calculated for both AM and PM.
And so it keeps it a science. Okay, thank you. So then my next question is, so how then? We, we keep comparing years of studies. There's 2019, 2021, and I've heard multiple times that the studies and, and in the reports, that the studies are out of date. So what makes you think that this is so accurate just because of this, this, the, the numbers that are in there? Like we, I, I just don't feel like apples and apples, like there's too many reports, there's too many places that say we don't have the most accurate or up-to-date information. So could you help me understand that better, please?
So most of what we're talking about for outdated information is about the housing needs analysis. It is the projection for the need for a certain amount of housing. Those are always looking backwards and they say, okay, you've had this much growth historically. We're just going to assume that same growth rate and take it forward. That's not a very sophisticated model. It's, it's the best we've got. But if you have anything weird with the history of that projection or your starting point is incorrect, it doesn't take much for the housing projection to be off. For transportation, Todd went out and he threw hoses and he did actual measurements on the roadway today. And he took the projects that have been approved but haven't been built. And he, he projected them and put them on top of that model. So he took real traffic counts. He said, we're going to have some autumn sunrise traffic, we're going to have some Plumb Black Gardens traffic. I'm going to put those on top of the counts that I already got. And that shows me the background situation. From there, I'm going to take the ITE manual, I'm going to calculate how many trips are coming and going, and I'm going to put them on top of the model. Right?
Could you remind me what time of year that was done, please?
December? The mayor says December.
That's, I might as well tag into this question because based on your analysis, you did it in December 2022 around the holidays. How many days did you do the traffic count? I saw one. Typically, they're done for, thank you. Typically, they're done for one, one day during a peak two-hour window. And then we take the one hour, one hour peak within that two-hour count.
So you did it, you did it in December of 2022 for one day? Or we haven't fully recovered from COVID yet?
But, well, that's correct, but that's, that's kind of industry practice. That's the ODOT reviewed it, your own traffic engineer approved it. That's the, that's kind of the typical process for these studies is to look at one day. But we would do it when school's in session. We have adjustment factors for time of year. ODOT publishes very detailed adjustment factors. So you can, if you count during different months, you can adjust to the, the peak conditions. And all that was, was part of the, the traffic study.
Sorry to interrupt you.
Thank you.
Thanks. That's Frisacco.
Thank you. So I'm having a hard time with this elementary school theoretical situation. So, so for me with the, with these trips and, and you're right, words, words do matter. And I think some of the words that are being used today, I feel undermined. And I think that, and, and, and just underestimated my intelligence when we say that the, that the traffic is going to decrease with this theoretical assumption. And I think what, what would better illustrate what would hap, for me, what would happen would be what would most likely go on this site versus this theoretical elementary school. And so I'm having a hard time really understanding what the traffic impact would be based on what would most likely be developed in a normal residential scenario. So I feel like we've picked this, this worst-case scenario, which isn't giving me, I feel like not the right information to make this decision because I feel like it's, we're picking this one, one scenario that most likely probably wouldn't happen. And so I'd like to know why it was chosen for this scenario, understanding that it probably created the most trips and made, told a better story. Could you kind of explain that, the rationale behind that?
So we, we, the transportation planning rule says, look at the most intense use under one zone versus the most intense use under the other zone. So the most intense use under institutional would be an elementary school. That's the highest generating traffic. Well, actually, we had a. Well, actually, we had a scenario that was even more intense than that. Um, we, we, in conversations with the city. Um, we pulled that back a bit to, to the what's before you tonight. So there is a, a scenario where it could even. Be argued that it would be more intense and the equivalent of multifamily. Um. But that's why we have multiple parties involved in the scoping is what is reasonable. So.
Did we look at what was most likely? The most likely build scenario?
Not the language of the transportation planning rule. The transportation planning rule says reasonable worst case. And the term worst case doesn't sound great, but that's, that's the statute. Reasonable worst case scenario under each of the two, um. Zoning designations. So if we're going to look at the most intense. Use of the multifamily site, we have to look at the most intense use of the institutional and compare them.
But not likely. Okay. Um, and I, I'm also having this hard time with, um, you know, we have, we have conversations with ODOT and I've. Been in, in ODOT conversations where they want to get our input because we're the experts that live in our community. So it's really hard then to sit here and sort of discount that. The community members aren't the experts that have this lived experience on a day to day basis. Um. And so I think that that, it, that, that's really hard to, again, I, I go back to this. Traffic's going to decrease. Um, I mean, I think that's a hard, hard pill to swallow. And again, just doesn't give me a realistic. View of what would likely happen versus.
So traffic is not going to decrease. Traffic, the most, traffic will be less under the most intense.
I understand, I, I understand. And the way that it was worded is if, you know, yeah, it's in this scenario.
It's a confusing topic. I just want to make sure everybody understands.
I just, I, I understand what you're saying. It was the elementary school versus the, 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 um.
And I just like to weigh in on, on the likeliness of it. Um, you know, the rule does say what it says about the reasonable worst case. But when staff was scoping it, they thought it was likely, it was probable that a church. Would have an elementary school attached to it. Yes, this church currently has an elementary school elsewhere. But it is, that is a compatible use that's likely. Um, one of the more intense traffic generates, generating uses allowed in that zone is a community college. And staff said, no, that, that's not going to happen there, right next to a church. So there is that degree of. Okay, let's not just pick the very highest. It's given the site size. What's adjacent to it? What is, you know, the reasonable worst case scenario? So, so there is that element of what's likely in there.
It's off for now.
Uh, council president Pratt, I'll go back to council earlier.
My questions are on transportation and, um, the traffic signal. If you were putting in elementary school. It seems like you would also be required to put that traffic signal. And so it seems like that's kind of a moot point with this because. Just making a point. And then I'm also wondering if, um, we know tolling is coming on I two oh five and we know that's going to be so. Um, was that increased? Can you hear me? Was that increased, um, expected traffic included? And is it just the fact that it's? Going to be a. That we're going to have this terrible traffic. Oh, gosh. That I'll just talk loud, that we're going to have this terrible traffic and this is just going to make it slightly worse. Is that what the traffic studies basically saying that the effect will be minimal to make it worse than it will already be?
So tolling was not studied i- in this, um, because that hasn't happened yet. So that's not. Right. But un- until it's adopted and the, and they put off that decision for, for a few years. So what the T P R. In- instructs us to evaluate tolling i- is outside of that. Um, in terms of, you know, the existing level of congestion and, and we're making it worse, what T P R says is looking at. Your property and the impacts of this zone change. Are you mitigating that impact? It's not asking you to solve all of the problems regionally. It's your impact from changing this zone. And the experts all agree that yes, that, that impact has been mitigated by that signal. Which is why T P R i- is met. And if I could go back to one question, uh, that council president Pratt had, uh, it was when Mr. Novak was up here talking about the fifteen year. Um, affordability limitation. You know, I think one thing, and, and we detailed this in, in one of our letters. That I think it's important when you're talking about the range of affordability is that the, the housing type is relevant. Um, so for example, in your housing needs analysis, it talks about in the year, um, twenty eighteen. That houses that sold and the category of the most, um, single family homes that sold. Are affordable to people in the one hundred and fifty to two hundred M F I range. And then the very next category of homes were affordable only to people in the two hundred percent or higher. And so what that means is a single family home is a lot more expensive than an apartment. And so even without that income restriction for a certain number of units for a certain period of time. Having an apartment, a multifamily housing type avail- available. Provides a, a, a range of, of housing at a price point that's less than most single family homes in, in your community.
Uh, that, that's true. It would be less than, um, purchasing a home, but, um. That being said, you're building very nice apartments and I don't think they're going to be affordable to people probably under a hundred and twenty. Percent of M F I most likely.
S- some, some will be, and that's why we volunteered a condition to make sure that it was. It's a range. It depends on, on the size. It depends on the size. It depends on the finishes. It depends on a variety of things, but we understood there was skepticism. And so that's why we volunteered the condition of approval.
Council Brooks.
Um, just to dovetail on a couple of things, I know too, and we've, we've seen this. While I appreciate the ten percent, to me, it doesn't seem like a big number and. When we have neighboring cities where, um, seniors are being evicted right now because of turnover for. Um, thirty year and forty year, which would be typical mortgages and, um. That, um, that I, I, I. I've never heard of a fifteen year before working. On the policy advisory board for Washington County and looking at affordable housing. Um, so to me, that number stuck out to me as well. Um, I appreciate the. Conversation and I'm going to weigh in on traffic as well. Um, and that there's standards and that there's a science. Um, and I think that what, what makes us wary is we have these standards and sciences. I used to live somewhere else, um, that don't seem to work well for our city. We have, um. A very tough situation in our city where we have. Boone's Ferry Road backed up all across the entire city for. Two major parts of the day as it stands right now. And we have a failed intersection that ODOT. Doesn't include in the tolling study that it presents to us. So we have, uh, traffic engineers that have talked to us specifically. Around making things work with traffic engineering, but it doesn't work. Um, with engineering our lives and, um. So I think there's a certain kind of weariness around, um. The reality, how well these standards are working in practice in our city. And, um. To hear that tolling is not even being included, and this is a looming thing. Um, but we know in, our council's been very involved with the tolling conversation. That even though there's a delay, ODOT said they're moving forward. And they just like to listen better. So we earlier had a counselor say that makes us very concerned. So, um. I have more belief in tolling coming, even though it's not something that we're promoting here in our city. It's not going to impact us well. Than a imaginary school. Um, and then my other question was, um. Um, when we talked about amenities, about swimming pools, we're talking about renters and the way that. That from what I understand, working on this plan, but I actually feel proud of the work that we've done. And the amount of affordable housing that we've done under this council. We've done different things than previous councils have done. So, um, we understand it's a floor. We've done a lot in five years. And, um, some of the conversation makes me feel a little frustrated listening to this. I will say that, um, when I think of amenities for somebody living in. An apartment, it's not a swimming pool. It's about going to the grocery store. And access to goods and services, transportation. And with less on our roads. So the reason why we would have something. Like this in our downtown center is so that would be more walkable. We'd have less trips on the roads because we're already. Suffering under, um, however, while these engineers have been planning. Our engineering, road engineering, traffic engineering for years. Um, and the other thing is when we look at. What's happening and coming like our mayor just was in DC advocating for money for roads. There's no mu- there's one project that's going to come to our whole state, and it'll be the interstate bridge. So even improvements on Boone's Ferry that have been on our plan and our tip for a long time. They're going to be on our plan for a long time. That money isn't coming. Um, what's coming is tolling. That's going to make Boone's Ferry. A way that's an affordable way for the people that live in apartment buildings that. Are, and, and, and then finally, I'm just going to say like, um, as far as. So, so those, those are the concerns. That's part of the thing with the planning that I, with our city planning, with our planning documents. Um, and then with our very deep concerns about. Um, making agreements with developers that. Told us right to our faces that they preserve the trees. And we have a, well, maybe it's going to work out if we work well with the county. So those are the kinds of things that I'm thinking about as a counselor when I'm thinking about. The things that you've talked about, but mostly amenities. Um, I know the traffic thing, there's a lot of. And I think also if you're going to use, um. Abbreviated words, I'd rather you say what they are. Thanks.
Other questions?
I do want to. And so I just want to acknowledge that traffic is an issue. I, 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 we can sit here and say that this development will make it worse. Tuolton Sherwood is backed up, highway eight, highway ten, Shoals Fair two seventeen, everything is F messed up. Okay? And so we can sit here and try to be experts. I feel the traffic because I, I, I drive, I'm on the car every single day working with communities. I avoid this location specifically because it is so bad. But it's no different than two seventeen Shoals Fair Highway eight. And when it comes to housing. You can't forget that there is shared housing between parents and children. So when it comes to affordable housing, this may be it. Because we have shared families living together. Okay? Um, I don't know how I feel about this yet, but I like housing coming into Walton. There is an unenrollment in the school district because it's unaffordable to live in Tuolton. Okay? That's just the bottom line. We've all come here to have this beautiful community, but yet we don't want to share it. It's too bad. We have these beautiful parks, a park bond just got passed. It's going to increase the entire community, it's going to increase traffic to our community, period. We can sit here and beat this developer down because of traffic. But we did it to ourselves. We voted for the urban growth boundary. We voted for limited car. We voted for all that stuff. Enjoy it. Okay? That's just how it is. There's nothing you can do. You can carpool. We made incentives around that. There is all kinds of things around. But traffic, yes, it's going to be a big problem. I understand. It really is. Um, but I want affordable housing and I understand that people who live, a lot of families live together now. So this may be single family units or single apartments, but we have dual families. And we don't have enough housing. We don't have enough apartments that are affordable. I like this. I don't like the traffic. I really don't. And I can't sit here and say that I support everybody here or, or don't support. But I know that when I was growing up, I lived with twenty one kids in our house. Okay? Three families. Okay? Here, we can sit here with an average income of a hundred thousand dollars in Tuolton. And say that we all have to live in one house, one family. It doesn't work that way. Dual families live together. We support our moms and our dads. I'm fortunate, my brothers, I have so many family members because they help with my mom and dad. And that's common in many low income housing. Traffic sucks. I get it. But this is another way for people to be able to live in Tuolton, enjoy what we enjoy. Okay? I don't know how to get there. You know, the, 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 the growth is coming. Houses are going to get more expensive. We can sit here right now and snapshot and baseline this area and say, traffic is not going to work. But as we move to fifteen years, when the average homeowner lives in their house twelve years and they move out. And then we're going to be left with the decisions that we're making today in council. I'll be off the council in twenty years probably, and housing will still be a problem. I, people need to support each other. I know that in my household, twenty one kids in one house, three families, that was normal, twelve hundred square foot house. We remember in the days before when it was one bathroom. Now, what do we have? Two and a half bathrooms, four thousand square foot houses? Traffic sucks. I get it. But it's, it's a way for, to people to live in Tuolton, dual families. Have any decisions yet, but I know traffic is a big issue here. I avoid that location. But we did it to ourselves. It isn't just. This Boone's Ferry. It's every single street that, that feeds everywhere. I live in Fox Hills. We just had. Um, Commons and Tuolton built. That corner right there is going to be so jammed up with traffic. It was passed. Sure, that property was zoned for that at the time. But here we have a good piece of land that has access to freeways on both directions, you know? Some people may not even go down. They're going to go to Sherwood. We'll probably have people who live in Sherwood. It's. It's a hard decision. Okay? But know this, that people are living together now, especially with baby boomers retire who can't afford to live on their own. They're being supported by their kids. This may be that avenue. We have no housing. Tuolton is on, kids are unenrolling from this public school because it's unaffordable to live here. Now, they may not come to Tuolton. We have the room in Tuolton, like the schools, we do. We don't, I mean, I don't see why, if you were to ask that question. We're low on, on schools right now. So we could use the kids in our public schools to keep our funding up. Okay, there's an unenrollment in the public schools, funding is being cut because there isn't enough people in the schools. Now, to what this, this development may not do that for us. But it does allow people to live together, have affordable housing. I just don't know where else to send people. People are moving out of Tuolton. Traffic sucks and I know it, but you can, no one can sit here and tell me if any good. Artery that feeds any one of us is even better. So we did it to ourselves. We wanted no traffic. We didn't invest in roads and we're going to live with it. Now we have to make the best we can. Again, I don't know how I'm going to vote this, but I know traffic is a big issue. I'm not an expert. I'm on the road every single day. But there's nothing better out there. I, I, I can challenge anybody who can say. What do we have here in our metropolitan area that's better than what we have in Blues Fair? They're not, they're all the same. They all suck. Tell me again.
Uh, council Ray is going to go next. So Ray.
Yeah, thank you. Um. I, um. Yeah.
Clear this is questions, not deliberations.
Yeah. So, yeah, thank you. The, I, I'm a, I, I'm thinking of the, obviously, traffic. It's a big. Deal and I, and I spent quite a lot of time reading the, the report. Um, I wish that. Um, it had been done in a way where, uh, the peak times, I mean, I, I thought it was. A little bit, um. Not sure what was that decision doing it during a, uh, December when kids are not in, when they're not in school or doing. Coming out of the pandemic time. I feel like that was, that for me that, I don't know what was the purpose of that. I think if I'm going to do it in. Uh, some kind of, um, exploration like that or some kind of investigation, I would probably go with the highest peak time and. And, uh, and then kind of slow down and go back when doing low peak times. I mean, it's just, I just thought that was interesting that. Um, I was looking forward to hearing a little bit more of like the reason why it was done, um, during. Just less than an hour in a, in a December month. So, um, that was disappointing. Um. The. I, um, I think that can be, I would have. Like I say, if we get more feedback, more information on that, that would be. Uh, more informed. So we, I will be more informed to make a decision that is. The best for our city. I do want housing. I mean, I, I mean, it's this one thing. That's one thing that, um. That we're talking about. So, um, my question is that. Why, I mean, I guess my, my decision, and I think you mentioned that already. Why it was done during a month that there were no kids around or, you know, a time period that it was. Really not. In my opinion, um. It's not a good information. It's not the best information for me.
Sure. And, and Todd, you might want to weigh in, but I thought I heard you say, Todd, that it was taken while school was in session. And that there are standards for adjusting during slower months. And so all of those metrics were applied. Do you want to?
So the, the counts were done during December, but we, we, they were done when school was in session. As we've talked about a bit, we do have a lot of documented traffic trends. ODOT publishes. Them in great detail to adjust to peak conditions with the count data we have. We've also done a lot of traffic adjustments through COVID for a lot of. For a lot of time during COVID, we'd go back to pre-COVID traffic counts that were from twenty eighteen or even much older than that. And try to adjust those forward, um, which. As precise as we wish we were, you know, once we start making those big adjustments, we found it's really not very accurate. And by last December, we did find those counts were actually back to pre-COVID volumes for that month. And so using those published, um, adjustment factors, we can actually get much more, much more accurate data. So we've, we've, we've really studied traffic counts a lot during COVID and done a lot of different things to adjust for. For that, the impact of the pandemic. But we have found that recently, even last December. Those counts are, are back to pre-COVID conditions. So we can take those counts and we did adjust them to our worst month. We, project schedules as they are, we can't just wait for. May or a, a month that we would arbitrarily do while school is in session that we think is highest because we have. No matter where we do the counts, we need to adjust for some other factors and that's what was done here.
Okay, thank you. And, and also the other disappointing thing that I feel like with Counselor Hiller about apples to apples. Is the, um, the comparison of having a, a school versus what really were you're proposing here, so. That was confusing, not confusing, I, like, I, it's more like, it's, I don't know if it's the right comparison and, um. It, it didn't make sense to, to, to me, at least, as I was reading and I'm hearing your, your, um. Your proposal, so. I'm not sure what to, what we can say about that. I'm just saying that it wa, it's not really what I expected as a comparable.
Is it helpful? I'm happy to explain that maybe in a different manner.
No, I mean, it's just, it won't help. I, I, I just, it just in my mind, I thought I would come, I would hear another comparison of like. What the actual site would, would have been with the versus, um, it will be if versus elementary school. And how that would decrease. That was a little confusing in the beginning and then everybody started talking. So I kind of just started analyzing all that and it didn't make sense in my, in my, in, to me, as I'm trying to make this decision. This is, this is not about traffic, so, um, just, I thought I wanted, I just wanted to make that comment, sorry. This, this is more about, uh, the commitment to restrict ten percent of the units so they can, so they are affordable for, to workforce middle income. Household earnings, eighty percent of, of area median income. So for me, um. When you're selecting these, say there's this apartment complex. And you're selecting the families, is that something that you're all doing? I mean, how do you know? These people are low income and it's going to be affordable for them? I know, it, it seems renting is expensive, so.
Uh, renting is relative to homeownership, uh, renting can be less expensive. The way most projects work on, uh, deed restricted units. Whether it's in Portland for inclusionary housing, I was, I assume we'd use a similar system, which is. Uh, and this, a similar system to what is used in low-income housing tax credit units. Where we would open up an advertising, people will get on a waitlist. People would present housing income data, their, their financial data, which is what. If you were applying for a low-income housing tax credit unit, that's what you have to do. You provide your house, your income data. And based on that data, we look at household income, we look at the eighty percent AMI, uh, rules that are published by the state. That are used, um, again, for the tax credit housing. Those set different levels of area median income based on household size. Um, and, uh, and percentage of AMI. And we use those criteria, so it would be very similar to how, uh. An approval is done for a low-income housing tax credit project. Does that?
And yeah, a little bit. I'm just thinking of someone that makes fifteen, seventeen dollars an hour and, you know, trying to, uh, live in a. In Twalton. I, I, I just think of how, how difficult that will be, um, and I guess I'm trying to process that in my, in my head, how. How to identify someone that's low income, um, that will potentially live there in, in the. Uh, low income, um, of, uh, units.
So I think it's important to, to. To look at this project and know it's not going to be all things for all people. We're not going to provide. The entire range of housing. And as, uh, Council Brooks has noted. Walton has done quite a bit for affordable housing. You just passed Planback Gardens. Planback Gardens is restricted to folks who are earning less than sixty percent of area median income. This project is not targeted to that, that, um, group of folks in this community. You are doing other projects in order to serve those folks. One of the biggest challenges in multifamily housing is how do you serve people who earn between. Say sixty or seventy percent of area median income and a hundred and twenty percent of area median income. Because at a hundred and twenty percent, they're probably not making enough to buy a home. But they're making too much for, for a deed restricted or a tax credit affordable housing project. And really, that's where this project sits. We're, yes, we are at the higher end of that realm. Because it's a new project, it's a class A apartment. But by providing more apartments, we also allow there to be more supply. And, you know, I, first week economics, which I'm sure you all took, supply and demand. The more there is supply, it does allow prices in other places to go down. It provides more options. And that's how we increase affordability throughout the community. Is by providing options and providing options in multiple locations so that people have housing options. And that that, and that housing at all income ranges is dispersed through your community versus centrally located just in downtown.
Thank you.
Okay, I have one last traffic question, sorry. Just, could you just share in the science of your work, what is the plus and minus percentage?
The plus or minus percentage?
Yeah, it's data, right?
Sure. I think it, I think it, it improves over time because we, we collect a lot of data, like. Maybe you talked about the ITE trip rates. We'd collect.
What is ITE?
ITE is Institute of Transportation Engineers, sorry, Counselor Brooks.
I mean, we, we are just laypeople, right? Like, we're not the experts, so you have to help.
So to use this as an example, that is a very large reference that's used across my profession. To do things like estimate how many trips a new development will generate. But that data is updated continuously. Old data falls off, new data comes in. Those rates change, so, so as time goes on, they, they maintain their accuracy. So it's hard to, it's hard to answer your question.
I mean, so, okay, so in, how, how long have you been a scientist of this?
Uh, twenty-six years.
So, so twenty-five plus years. So have you ever gone back and looked on the work that you've done? And real, and, and been able to do kind of a, a study of, oh, this is what we projected and this is actually what happened.
Right.
So could, could you share some of that data if you've done it? Or if not, has the industry done that work?
We have done that. And I can tell you that most times when we estimate future conditions, this is the build-out year. This is what traffic's going to look like and what the volumes will be. We overestimate what that is. So.
So there's going to be two hundred less trips?
Potentially, but I, I will say with the methodology that the industry uses and agencies like ODOT require us to do. It's pretty conservative analysis and most times the traffic volumes don't get to the level that we forecast that they will be. So most of the time we're analyzing conditions that are worse than what materializes.
We're analyzing conditions that are worse than what materializes. I'm not sure I get that.
Yeah, we're, like for this analysis, we're projecting conditions in the future. By growth rates, adding trips, adding our own trips, all these factors, right? We've, in my experience, doing this for a long time, when we go back later and we do traffic counts. Ten years from now, when the site's developed with something and, you know, we'll find. Traffic volumes aren't as high as we thought they were going to be. And when we do that projection, usually we're over projecting what those volumes are. Right, right.
And I could find this on that ITE or whatever it is you said it was. What is it? What is that acronym again, please?
So that was referring to a specific manual, but yes, it's ITE, Institute of Transportation Engineers. And they published lots of different references. That was one.
And they have a Cliffs Notes, you think?
I don't know that they do, but.
Thank you.
You bet.
It's not about traffic. My question's back to Steve and I wondered if you could, um, tell me the difference between high density and medium high density.
Do you mean just from the like actual zoning designation, which is the.
Housing would go into.
In, as far as the built form of it, is it?
Yeah, like, would, would high density be just apartments or would it be?
Well, I mean, like suburban hi- high density versus.
Code, what is high density as opposed to medium high density?
That just refers to density. It doesn't refer, refer to both.
Housing type, okay.
Right. And so it could be, I mean, it could be the same in, in a variety of different zones.
Other questions? All right, my turn. Don't go anywhere. All right, so. There's been a lot of talk about propose, if comparing this to an elementary school. What did you envision the size of the elementary school being? Because by my math, you are proposing. Two hundred and seventy-six units, correct? And assuming the city's bare minimum amount of car parking, that's one point six five spots per unit. So you're looking at approximately, you know, five thou, three, uh, five hundred cars, five hundred and twenty-five cars. Possibly being there. So five hundred cars coming in and out daily. That's basically what a school is. To me, an elementary school on nine acres would not be that big. So how, what, what was your chip generation? How many cars did you envision coming in and out of this elementary school? Compared to an apartment that's two hundred and seventy-six units, possibly three cars, as, uh, Counselor Gonzalez says. Most apartment units I know, the one down the street from me, there's three cars per unit because there's multiple people in the unit. So looking at that, by my math, that might be up to six hundred and ninety vehicles here. So good math for me, please.
So for your first question, we assumed a, a school of two hundred and fifty students. Um, and the, so the transportation characteristics of a school are different than residential uses. Sometimes you have multiple trips with parent pickup and drop-off, um, buses, staff, that kind of thing. So, and schools have those notoriously high peaks, right? So they generate a lot of trips over a short period of time. Compared to other land uses like residential. Okay. And so we assume a two hundred and fifty student school. And again, these, these trip rates, they come from that manual that we were talking about, Institute of Transportation Engineers. And so we use those trip rates. So we have a trips per student for a school. We have trips per dwelling unit for multifamily. And that's where those numbers come from. And so we know, like in multifamily, people work in different types of industries. Some commute during typical commuter hours, some don't. So those, those are spread out throughout the day. But a, a school has those definite peaking characteristics. So the, the types of trips and when they're generated really matter. Because we're looking at those peak hours. And so the two uses are pretty considerably different.
The uses are different, but I think the amount of trips are about the same in my book. Because you're going to have the parents going to get their kids in the morning and then the afternoon. So to me, as Counselor Hillary says, to me, apples to apples, the elementary school is pretty close in my mind. About the number of cars and vehicles coming in and out of that school is basically the same as your proposed development. There is no difference in my mind. Well, because those, the cars are there, the cars are leaving. The cars are coming and going. Those cars, a lot of those cars will be taking their kids to school in Sherwood and going to work. And then to get back to ITE manual, as the ITE manual actually reflected, today's. Financial, uh, situation where you have multiple roommates in a three-bedroom apartment, like I mentioned before, each having a vehicle. Or you have to, uh, Counselor Octavia, uh, the Counselor Gonzalez. Uh, mentioned that you have a family with multiple vehicles with their parents working the teenagers. Does the ITE reflect the amount of vehicles in today's market in apartments?
It does because of that update in the data that I mentioned before, where some of the older data falls off. Newer data comes online. And we've done lots of studies for, um, low-income housing, market rate housing for multifamily. Parking studies for apartments. So we've, we, we've definitely looked at those types of things. So the, to the extent that there are multiple families or multiple vehicle ownership. That, those, those factors are reflected in that data.
Okay. All right, uh, non-transportation question. I, I actually, I take that back. So the signal at Norwood is basically a mitigation effort to get people in and out. Uh, you know, on and off of Norwood Road. It's not going, it's not going to alleviate in any way congestion on Boons Ferry Road, correct?
Correct. Upstream and downstream, Boons Ferry has a corridor. It won't, it won't fix a corridor level improvement, but it does allow vehicles to get on and off of the arterial, right?
And then, this is getting really wonky, but as a background, I've been, I've read a lot of traffic studies. The twelve years, sixteen years, what the heck, it's been, it's been a long time. And can you explain the difference between a level D and a level E? Level service entering intersection because having lived through the midnight hearings for Nyberg Rivers. And the traffic impacts are Martin Ozzy and Twalton Sherwood Road and Nyberg. That there we've minimal impact to levels of services, uh, level service and seeing what the actuality is. Of the traffic study that it didn't come anywhere close. It was worse than what the traffic study said. So can you explain what those two levels of service are so folks know?
So level of service is very strictly average delay per vehicle in seconds. And I, maybe I'm failing my twenty-six years of experience, but I can't tell you off the top of my head what those thresholds are. But D is adjacent to E, so E has a slightly higher average delay per vehicle. So some cars will get through on a green and they'll have very low delay. Others might have to wait through two cycles and they have very long delay. But on average, that's what's reflected in a, in level of service. So D is slightly more delay than E.
So the frustration folks have on a level E level of service is they're sitting there watching the light turn. And they're still sitting there, three, four times sometimes in a level E. And what's interesting is a lot of cities find that acceptable and of course residents don't. And that's the quandary we're in. And I once had a traffic engineer tell me that, um, with an apartment complex coming into somewhere in Twalton, I'm not going to mention it. That the level of service was E, the impact still kept it at a level E, which is a crappier level of E. And so, but it was still a level E. So we met the standard, which is again, not what people want to hear. Uh, so I just want to let people know, you know, what that, you know, level D and E is. Because, uh, city standard is level D, correct? In certain areas and level E and others. This might be a Mike McCarthy question.
That is correct. The, it's level of service D in some areas and others, it's in the approval criteria.
Uh, or let you sit down, let me go through the rest of my notes. Uh, or let you sit down, let me go through the rest of my notes.
Can I respond to that?
Oh yeah, sure, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not here to tell you if congestion is good or bad.
Right.
But the, the performance standard, what's deemed acceptable in terms of meeting of approval criteria. Is fixed and it does include a fair amount of congestion, which is not a real popularity contest winner with a lot of people. So the standards, for better or worse, they allow a quite a bit of conject- congestion rather. And still meet the standard for acceptable operation. So. What's a doc, what's, what's in the transportation system plan, which is part of the comp plan, and that's where all of those. Metrics are established and that's what we compare against.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
So there was a lot of talk in the study about the Bassell Creek Parkway Bridge. And, you know, the modeling with it and without it. Um, you know, on this trip that I just took, the Bassell Canyon Bridge is not happening. It's not gonna happen. It's not gonna happen by specifically, I don't know if this is the, one of your study or someone else's study, it is not gonna be built by twenty twenty-seven. It's not even an M stip, M stip's a disaster. There's no money in the county coffers, there's no money in the federal money, the federal coffers to build this bridge. So there was a five percent, can you go over what this magic five percent impact is that without the bridge there, what happens? Because the bridge has not happened.
Well, I guess to back up a little bit, we, we did include scenarios with and without. That was in the near term in the build-out scenario, which we sort of voluntarily provided, because this is just the zone change for us tonight. That's really not subject to the approval criteria. But when the, when we looked at the planning horizon analysis, we did assume it's in place. Because it's in the financially constrained project list, those are twenty forty conditions, it's farther in the future, so. Um, for the build-out scenario though, we did look at with and without. Um. That facility in place. So with, it, it just, it changes the distribution of trips if we don't have that connection.
To the benefit or part of this all of Boons Ferry Road.
Oh, I will have to, I need to do a little homework to answer that. Can I, yeah, thank you.
Oh, you can come back to me, sure, that's no problem. I'm also looking at, there was another, one more question for you, sorry, sir. There was, where is it? Now, it had to do with. The overpass in Wilsonville and ODOT. That the timeline for the having that done, you know, that's not even where near it, where is it? Uh, see. Oh, the ODOT improvements are not planned until twenty twenty-eight or twenty forty. Yeah, so there's a big time range there. So, so if this application would be, you know, is approved. What guarantee do we have those two additional lanes wherever we get built by ODOT? Because they're saying it might not happen to twenty forty. Per their, per their statements.
Right, that's the, that's kind of the funding priority that's assigned to it in the regional transportation plan, R T P. Sorry, I'm trying to correct my acronym usage. Um, and so ODOT wants to bump that up.
Mm-hmm.
So that's why for development applications like this, they're wanna establish that proportional share mechanism.
Mm-hmm.
Twalton said they're willing to do that. Um, hopefully, Wilsonville would do the same, because they're probably a much bigger influence on that. So when we add those kinds of funding mechanisms, then that, it'll move that funding priority forward. It also allows them to. If they have some funding already, it, it puts them in a better position for grant applications to, to make that happen soon. But it's also a very expensive improvement, so it's outside of the scope of any individual development project to foot the bill. So this is just a mechanism for each development in the surrounding area that has an impact to pay its own way.
Okay, but possibly it's seventeen years away. And again, as I mentioned early in work session, this wasn't even on the list for ODOT. At J-PAC at the feds, there wasn't even an ask for ODOT to get this money. It was, it's all about the bridge, it's not about any other intersection. So, okay, uh, that's all I have for you.
Well, I'm gonna, I'll find a better answer for you on the five percent, and I'm sure I'll be back.
All right, uh, Mr. Prager, please.
Yes.
All right. So looking at your study, uh. So there's a hundred and ninety-nine Douglas fir trees in that buffer for your study, correct?
I don't believe that every tree was a Douglas fir, but.
Roughly.
The vast majority of them were.
All right. So I think you alluded to this before, but explain exterior growth protection to save the interior.
So the, the trees along the edges of the grove have more access to light and space and um. Wind, and because of that exposure, they develop a better structure, better crown and healthier growth. Um, so those trees along the edges are really important to preserve. Um, compared to the trees in the interior of the grove that are more suppressed. And don't have as good a structure because they don't have that space and light access.
So what happens if some of those trees in the exterior grove, uh. Mistakenly get cut down?
So the, the reason we really want to protect the exterior trees is because. They provide protection for the interior trees, so once those exterior trees are removed. Um, it can increase, uh, especially the susceptibility to what's called wind throw. Um, which is when trees that aren't used to being exposed to the wind, don't have good structure are suddenly exposed. Um, they're less able to withstand the forces of wind and they can um. Be more prone to toppling over or being suddenly exposed to more light can um. Change that kind of micro environment around the trees and they can become stressed because they're. Hotter and drier and just not used and adapted to that type of environment, so they could decline as well, even if they don't. Uh, subject, uh, become subject to wind throw.
Okay, so in your survey, you rated the condition of, of the trees. And from my scanning it and number crunching, the ma- the majority of the trees in that area are either in fair, poor. Very poor or dead condition, would you agree with that? And what I'm leading to is getting back to this exterior growth protection that those trees that are in the outside, if they go down. You've got a lot of trees in the center that are in poor condition or very poor condition or in fact already dead.
Yes, I mean, I don't have the numbers kind of tabulated that way of how many are good, fair and poor. But in general, the good trees are along the edges and the fair and poor and dead are in the interior.
So we're just, we're basically relying on these exterior trees to say happy, healthy and safe. Uh, because if they don't, that buffer could possibly end up like the buffer in the adjacent property?
I wasn't involved in the adjacent one, but in general, that's why we really stress the importance of maintaining those exterior trees.
All right.
Because we don't want that domino effect to happen if you remove the exterior.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you for your time. Uh, next set of questions, I don't know if this is for Mimi or for Steve. So we have our core area urban renewal zone. And where the major projects in that core area renewal zone is what we're calling the catalyst project, which is basically the same type of building in our downtown core. Um, so. This is a thirty-year urban renewal zone. Our H and A, we have seventeen years to reach that point of getting the numbers we want to get. So why is there no mention of the catalyst project, either by Steve or by Mimi? Because I want to include that, because this is another potential housing project, as is the rest of the urban renewal zone, because it's envisioned. That we will have high-density development along with multi-use. And that part of the funding for the Cora, that tax agreement financing will pay for. The fun to do the rezoning required in our downtown to allow this type of housing. So it doesn't seem like that was really mentioned at all in the packet, why?
Um, I mean, I, I guess in answer to the question of why, it's because there's not enough particulars about it to sufficiently. Identify it, I mean, how many units? What's the mix of affordable housing? Is it gonna have structured parking? As the, as the applicant mentioned, it's potentially a different product than this type of application. And I think that the approval criteria don't necessarily call for an analysis of other sites. To determine whether or not this site is suitable, I think the applicant has mentioned it here. You've obviously, by mentioning it, have introduced it into the record now, and so it's here. So I think I'd probably defer to the applicant to have them reiterate some of the statements they made earlier.
Okay, because I also, in a conjunction with that, when you're addressing this. The political third rail, if you will, for Twalton is the Stafford Triangle. The Stafford I G A is going to expire in four years. That Stafford area is gonna be wide open for development. And if the additional lane on two oh five is built by towing, below the river is immediate planning can begin. So that area between Borland Road and the river is immediately eligible for concept planning, comprehensive plan and development. And they have lots of willing sellers, believe me. In Stafford, they call me all the time. Again, that's not included in the packet as a potential other source of housing for Twalton within the next seventeen years. And this is way more immediate than the Cora, so.
All right, are you saying that the opportunity for housing would be in the triangle? Or the triangle development would, would bring more opportunity for downtown?
For Borland, Borland Road would be an additional area for Twalton to have housing. And that's what's in, you know, that is what is envisioned by all the folks in Clackamas County and at Metro. Is the Stafford Triangle development in four years, to get the development beginning.
Dan is willing to tap me out on this one.
Well, I might just pitch it over to Steve, because that's not in your, your housing needs analysis, so is it annexed into your city yet?
Not yet.
Okay, so that, I think that's why it's too speculative. Um, and I think that's a, another reason why it may be time to update your housing needs analysis. To have better data, to, you know, contemplate what's gonna happen in the Stafford Triangle. But we're, we're getting too speculative, you know, that, that may be future opportunities. But because it's not within your jurisdictional boundaries, it's not um, before you, it's, it's not a decision.
Years to get here. I have seventeen years to get to where I need, where we need to be.
Sure, it's, but, but I think what we're encouraging you is to, to aim higher. We, we think that the number in the H and A is too low, because your population has already exceeded. On day one of the H and A, what, where you thought you were gonna be in twenty years, so we think that's too low. Um, so, you know, if Stafford is annexed, that is an opportunity. Um, it'll probably be a lot more single-family housing, um, but there might be some multifamily housing opportunity also.
Uh, next one, let's see. There's mention of the TriMet bus line, the ninety-six, which currently only runs Monday through Friday during business hours. And the possibility of a new line coming from TriMet. One of my concerns there with that assumption is that TriMet doesn't put lines just because there's development there. They put lines because there's ridership data. And right now, the struggle we're having is they have no ridership data to build it, that line, I think it's the seventy-six. So, you know, you mentioned that that is an amenity for the development. But that bus, as of today, is only gonna be ninety-six for a while, to try and it figures it out. Um, so that to me is a challenge for folks who are gonna live there, if they don't have a vehicle. They don't have the ability to get downtown for any kind of supermarkets or go to Wilsonville where they want. Because your TriMet bus service isn't there yet, it might not be there for years. So just a question for you, uh, you do mention it, but. There's nothing there about ridership.
Well, the, the ridership, TriMet is a, a building and they, we will come uh, service. And so, yeah, you won't get ridership until you've got some rooftops to, to actually do the ridership. So, um, the, the, um. The part about the equation is that you've already got an established line, so it's easier to increase the frequency of an established line than to try to create a new one. So it's an established corridor, um, they know that that's a good route to go, that it's got good connectivity, good destinations. Um, and so adding additional. But uh, residents who can take advantage of that ridership can increase the numbers and then TriMet will react. As they sometimes do.
Yeah, but they also could take lines away like they did in Beaver Ridge and Cooper Mountain.
Yeah.
They're taking away lines, because there's no ridership, all right?
But you also said everybody's gonna have three cars.
Yeah, that's true. Which, uh, nice segue there, Mimi.
I'm here for you.
So for, I realize there's no parking plan yet. The bane of our existence in council is having residents come asking for permit, for permitting programs. Because they have overflow from apartment complexes due to those multiple cars. So how many spots are you envisioning high level of building in this facility? Yeah, I know you're saying one point six five, which is the city standard, but. Common, we all know that that's too, too small. I've been living through the Twalton Heights discussion. And the apartment complex down the street for me, that those are easily exceeded. And that you have a roll flow going into neighborhoods, and then neighborhoods come to us ticked off.
Um, and, and Steve, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the city standard is one point five. Um. For multifamily.
The city has adopted standard currently is, is, is higher, but we, under the C F A C rules, under the first part of it, it's one per unit.
Yeah, so it's even less.
So unless.
We're, so.
So it's even less. To my, I guess to my point, we're planning on one point six five. Uh, typically in an apartment project like this, one, ones that we manage elsewhere in the country. Um, parking is a permitted, uh, and we, we are closely managing parking. Um, because I can't rent apartments if I can't park them. Um, so it is a core process to make sure that we. May, maintain a level of parking that is in balance with the resident population. Um. I know that sounds like just me making a promise, but frankly, that is good business. Uh, and it's functionally necessary for the good operation of the project. Um. To be honest, if people are gonna park off-site, they're gonna go park at the, at Horizon, um, because it's closer than going off in the neighborhoods. In my expectation, that's a guess, but that was, would be what I would guess.
Okay. Um. Getting to some of the amenities that the applicant has cited. He cited that Horizons Fields would be available to people in the apartments, are Horizons Fields open to the public?
Yes, they are.
All right, thank you. You also mentioned that Sherwood Schools are an amenity, but they're six miles away. For any kind of facility, say if they're gonna do baseball or anything like that, it's really not a close by amenity if you can do anything with the Sherwood School district, correct?
Did we say that?
Yep, believe me, I read this thing.
But, but let's not forget, the quantity of amenities is not an approval criterion. So, you know, we presented that map to show, you know, suitability, um. So I think that's something important to keep in mind. And there are plenty of amenities, both within walking and driving distance. And the, the description in the comp plan talking about amenities doesn't say within walking distance. Which is why, you know, we drew sort of concentric circles to show what was walkable and what was a short drive away.
Okay. So going back to the, the ten percent of units, uh, being available for, for we'll work for. So basically that's twenty-seven units out of the, out of the complex will be, uh, set aside for middle housing. Uh, based on the latest stats I have, so eighty percent of A M I is approximately sixty-five thousand dollars of income. For a family of four. Um, and that is pretty tough, as was mentioned before. That's gonna exclude folks like cashiers, nursing assistants, postal carriers, and in fact, some teachers. So why did you pick eighty percent?
Because Twalton has defined um, middle housing and workforce housing as folks um, with between that one eighty and one twenty percent. So we used your definition and chose the lowest range. Once you get below eighty percent M F I, that's when you get into the affordable housing category, which is typically subsidized.
But also in that housing needs, uh, the housing needs analysis, there's a stat that twenty-six, twenty-six percent of residents can't afford a two-bedroom apartment. At one thousand three hundred and thirty dollars a month, which is forty-one thousand a year in income. So how, my, the what I'm getting wrapped around here is that. So how my, the what I'm getting wrapped around here is that. Uh, although commendable, it's not really going to help us meet our goals. This, this complex is not going to, twenty-six units is going to not help us meet our overall goals. At all. And the, the folks that really need the housing are, as you mentioned before, sixty percent or less.
So I, I think Lee said it well, this, this project's not solving all of your housing problems. And so, you know, we're targeting the not affordable because that's government subsidized typically. Um. Once you get past the not affordable, you have the middle and then you have high income. Um, you know, we're, we're targeting the middle income, which is the eighty to one twenty percent. You know, when you're talking about what's affordable to someone, it's also the cost burden. You know, you have to consider what's your car payment. What are all of your other things? And so when you're talking about whether someone's too cost burden, it considers things other than just their income. Um, the AMI figures also talk about if you're a household of one or if you're a household of six. And so I think it's a little hard to say, well then. If your rent's more than thirteen hundred dollars a month, how is this going to be affordable? Because there's so many different factors. Um, so that's why you, we use the vocabulary that's within the housing needs analysis of the eighty percent MFI and in committing to that. Voluntarily so that you know that you are addressing, you know, that portion of, of the, the population. You know, like we said earlier in our presentation, just having a different housing type is also something that's needed. Your HNA said that forty-seven percent of the units provided needed to be apartment units. Not single-family housing because apartments tend to be more affordable. So it's a, a lot of different ways to address what this gap is. Um, you know, and, and in your housing supply.
Okay, uh, Mimi. So going back to that area in downtown that it's uh, unbuildable. But I've seen plenty of buildings gone up. I've seen the Oregon Nurses Association Building go up with parking below it. I've seen Mercedes be built above the floodline. I've also seen the apartment complexes. Uh, the small apartment complex across from Key Bank elevated also. I understand there's an increased cost, but that doesn't make it unbuildable.
Right, it's not unbuildable. It's really challenging and it's, it, there is a significant financial burden to it.
Right, but it could, it can be done.
Some of it, um, floodplain, yes, um, CWS corridors, no. So it depends on the site and the situation. Um, the site that we looked at earlier, I believe had both. I believe it had a creek through it, plus it had floodplain.
Okay, and then. Last question. So I don't know if this is, this is, might be a Steve question. So getting into this middle housing, I mean HB two thousand one. Specifically defined middle housing as duplex, triplex, quadplex, cottage cluster and townhomes. They really never mentioned rental units because the whole purpose of HB two thousand one was encourage home ownership. So to me. You've mentioned before that multifamily includes quadplex cottage cluster and townhomes, correct?
That, um, say that again, Mayor.
So multifamily housing at a middle housing, you know, with the HB two thousand one does include. Quadplexes, cottage clusters and townhomes and condos, correct? Right, so, but I can be wrong here. I don't remember HB two thousand one ever mentioning apartments. As far as middle, as classified as middle housing.
So I think we're maybe conflating terms. I think that the applicant is using the eight to hundred and twenty percent me, uh. Median family income as a moderate income housing, which is separate and a distinct term from middle housing. Which is a housing typology based on like unit size and unit creation. And so I think that just to draw the line and distinguish between those two terms.
Okay.
And so the applicant has identified in the housing needs analysis. That there's suggested that the city has a need for also creation of moderate income housing in addition to regulated. Affordable housing. The, the two types are needed because there's a need in a variety of different income spectrums.
But aren't the two terms workforce housing and middle housing interchangeable? Or the state?
Moderate income housing and workforce housing.
But they use middling, they, they're calling this middle housing, workforce housing. In the application.
I think part of, and we, we did call it middle income, you're, you're calling it moderate income. Um, between the eighty and the one hundred and twenty percent, there's a room for a lot of different housing types. So that bill that you're talking about, I, I don't remember off the top of my head if it includes multifamily or not. That is one way from a state perspective that they're trying to encourage housing types that fit within that. Doesn't mean that those are the exclusive housing types that qualify as workforce or, or middle income or, or moderate income. It's basically the, the, what you're talking about is the bill that made single families owning illegal. Um, so it, it encourages, allows those types of, of housing. Because that's where the gap is, that, that missing middle.
Right, and but that's what the state's encouraging is development of these types of units throughout properties in twelfth.
Right, right. And, you know, I don't know if they include multifamily or, or not. Um. But you still have room for the multifamily because we know that's a particular housing type that tends to be uh, more affordable.
I think that's it. You made it through. Any other questions right now for the applicant? We got more to go.
I have one question. What, what, just to clarify, how many parkings, you say one point six five cars per unit? Is that, is that?
Now one.
It's one per unit?
For CFAC, yeah.
So the, the state has new rules that say the maximum parking you can require is one per unit. And then there's some units, I think if they're, what is it, less than seven hundred fifty feet, zero can be required. But we're planning on providing in excess of that.
Two.
One point six five is what's planned. And this is the type of thing um, that would be reviewed during architectural review.
Any other questions?
So, so just out of curiosity, if the architectural review board comes back to you and says, no, we see these issues in our community. And we require three parking spots per thing. What are you going to do?
Um, I'd want to see what the approval criterion that that was correlated to. Um, you attorneys, I know. Um, but, but seriously, like you'll just look at the criteria and the architectural review board will be.
Right.
They don't, if you don't like it, that's what'll happen. I would look at what the basis, what, what criteria they were basing that request on. Um, and then we would see what we could accommodate on, on the site. Um.
And if it brings it down to two hundred units, because you'd have to give that up. I mean, how desirable is that anymore then?
I, I think it would depend. It, you're, you're asking me a pretty hypothetical question without all the necessary data. Are we going to lose units? So that we can provide parking, probably not. Um, you know.
So have you ever thought about building a parking garage?
Then what is that going to do to the price point of, of the units? Um, so, so no, um, it's, it's surface parking. And but the parking garage, that's the type of housing type that you might see downtown. Which is why those units are more expensive. Um, and so it's, it's really trying to find that balance. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? At this point.
Okay, yeah.
All right, so I want to give.
That's the punchline.
I want to give people a break here. Uh, it's what, nine forty? Let's take a ten minute break and we'll come back at ten to ten. And we'll start off with the folks in Zoom for those uh, who support, oppose, or, or neutral on the application. So we'll see you in ten. Getting back to order, uh, to continue on discussion of item number one of public hearings. I understand the applicant wants to come forward and.
Good evening. Again, this is Dana Craftcheck. Um, I've been doing this for over twenty years and this is the first time that this has happened. Um. We appreciate your candor. We understand where this is going. We understand your concern about traffic. Um, we want to respect everyone's time and resources. So we withdraw our application so that we're, we're not asking for this anymore.
Okay, so Chris, what's the next steps?
Um, if the applicant has withdrawn the, the application, there's no matter pending before the city council upon which to make a decision.
Do I close the hearing?
You can um, close the hearing.
All right, uh, so since the applicant has withdrawn their application. Uh, for consideration of PTA twenty-three dash zero 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 one. And PMA twenty-three dash zero zero, 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 one. Uh, this hearing is now closed and folks can go home. It's not happening. All right, uh, I'll let everybody leave before we continue seeking. Or you can stay, there's not much left.
Fair, will there, will there be any more public comment at all?
No, it's, it's withdrawn.
Well, I just wanted to thank you. Thank you. You guys, you guys did your homework.
Afterwards. It's going to be quick. A- afterwards, when we close it, you can.
Okay.
We're still in session. Well, we got, let's. We got to wrap this up. All right. Yeah, I gotta do the gavel again. All right. Yeah, we have to close the meeting. Yeah. All right. All right. Okay, we got, we got to close the meeting. So if you quiet down a little bit, then we can shut it, uh, we can end this meeting. Do the gavel, all right. All right. Uh, that brings us to items removed from consent. Uh, we had none. Uh, council communications, this time I'll start to my right, but she's drinking a soda. How's your sucko?
I don't have any additional communications.
Right, Council Hillier.
Nothing additional, thank you.
Council Reyes.
Nothing additional either.
Council Gonzalez.
Nothing additional, thank you.
Council Brooks.
I just want to thank everybody that came up for Pride Parade and um, also wanted to thank all the people that came tonight. Um, and the decorum that was met with and my fellow counselors for a pretty long evening and thank, thank you.
Council President Pratt.
Nothing additional.
And I have nothing either. Again, yes, thank you for everyone coming out tonight. Uh, this is a testament uh, to how democracy is supposed to work. Pros, cons, everybody gets heard. Um, yeah, sometimes it got a little edgy, but, you know, we kept it civil and that's what I appreciate about Twalton. It never got nasty like other cities. We, we treated each other nicely, even though we might have disagreed, but. Um, we see how it turned out. So with that.
Motion to adjourn, second.
A motion and numerous seconds to adjourn. Uh, all those in favor say aye, aye, opposed. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for attending tonight.